Yeah.
I was singing, but I was grounded by, you know, so much soul.
Bill's speech on the side.
I was shocked by that.
I had like Kirksey.
My family told me.
Celebration, yeah.
Yeah. What are we up to? Jessica Olson is the last one.
We were good to go when we were singing.
At this point, we're just hanging out.
Right, that's the cut, right?
Joey, Joey.
And then she had a. So the analog.
Yeah, right.
Welcome everyone. Thank you for um the little bit of delay for the birthday celebration. Um, we are just coming back into session from an executive session. Um, thank you.
Nope, they're coming out of recess.
So. What in the here? O E eleven. Here we go. Uh, facilities and capital assets.
Great. Um, are you bringing?
Yeah, I think they've opened it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
So O E eleven deals with facilities and capital aspects, specifically the superintendent will assure that physical facilities and capital assets support the accomplishments of board policy zero, 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 one, and are safe and properly built, renovated and maintained. Uh, myself, Director Poon, Ms. Fox and Director Ronzer have taken a look at this. We believe that we are in compliance in items one through eight. Specifically, there's one in here that's not applicable currently regarding the land acquisition as number two, but throughout the rest, we believe we are in compliance. At that point, I would like to turn it over to Director Poon and Brandon Fox to set a base on a couple of the items in him.
All right. Specifically, I just wanted to mention, um, there was one in here who talked about the uh public use of our facilities and I wanted to share some numbers with you. I don't think folks really realize how much use we're getting in our buildings. And since July first, outside users, we've had over thirteen hundred um scheduled events in our buildings and for Mercer Island, uh, our school district and PTA uses, we've had over four thousand eight hundred. Between the two of them, it's over fifteen thousand hours of use in our buildings, um, extra hours that are being, you know, set up, break down, clean up, things like that. So um, we are getting a ton of use in our buildings. It's seven days a week, tons of hours. And I just, when I read that in O E eleven, I just wanted to share that with.
Thank you.
I would just address a couple of other things with that. Um, each year, uh, we kind of go through and look at capital projects for the following year and identify any issues that need to be resolved each um late fall or early winter. Tony and I go through the ICOS um building condition summary and update the condition on all the various sporting, part of which you're going to see in the consent agenda tonight for um IMS. But I think uh, I think Tony and his crew are doing a great job of keeping facilities um safe and uh in good condition. A couple of the things that are addressed in the O E are around construction schedules, which apply probably more to the larger projects, but um also to boilers and roofs and carpet. And this year we'll have painting.
Can you talk about uh safety? I know, you know, at least in the time that I've been on the board is when we added um, we added all the front.
Vestables.
Thank you. Vestables um in most of the buildings um that I know was, and then like the door locking procedures and all that. Can you talk about if you have any safety concerns with any of our buildings?
I don't, I mean, I don't have any safety concerns with our buildings. I think our buildings are extremely safe. Um, you know, we're constantly um upgrading. We're in contact with the police department on a regular basis. Uh, our SRO is in the buildings every day. I meet with her weekly. Uh, we discuss different, you know, possibilities of things that uh come up throughout the course of the week. Uh, we've got our security liaison at the middle school and at the high school. Um, you know, it's, it's front and center and, you know, I hate to say that, but it is front and center and um, and anytime we have issues, we're addressing it. I think the uh, the, the door locks that we've installed at the middle school have been a great help. Um, it doesn't make it a single campus or a single building, which is what our hope is. Um, but it has definitely made a much safer campus.
Can you talk more about the middle school?
As far as.
What are, what are the concerns and what are the?
So the, the biggest concern that we've heard over the years is the fact that we have three buildings and the students have to leave from building to building to go in between classes. And that's not ideal. Um, and I think, you know, Miller cannot hear about it. I think people probably speak better to that for us. Um, but um, so when we put the, the, the door locks in, it really created a much more safe environment. The built, the, the campus is not fenced, so many of our, our campuses are fenced and where it gives you that a little bit more of a containment. The, one of the designs that we are looking at at the middle school creates more of a enclosed courtyard, so we would have that enclosed campus and wouldn't be a fenced campus for a day. You know, like we have an elementary school, but it would create a much safer um. It's a terrible school environment campus, I guess is what I.
So what I hear you saying is that we've done everything that we can do with our existing facilities, but there's things that we could do in the future to make it a safer, safer environment?
I mean, Director, that's a, that's a loaded question, right? Have we done everything we can do? Well, I don't think there's ever going to be a case where I could sit here and tell you that we do everything that we.
Right, I, I.
Is our facility safe? Our facility is, is safe and it's, and it's as secure as we can make it. Can it be better? Yes. But um, I think we're, we've done a great job with what we've, what we've been given to make it like a safer place.
And I think that's a, I mean, I was just going to say, I think we're walking that, that tight line of, I feel like our buildings are safe, but there's ways to make them safer. That's the vestibule at, at Crest. Um, that is a possibility. That's our last kind of building that doesn't have that second vestibule entrance. Is an example of that being an upgrade we'd want to do. Um, with safety comes some inconveniences though too. I'm looking, I see Patrick here from the middle school and others as we went to locking all the doors during the, during um periods. Now students have to carry key cards in and out and, you know, remember to have the key cards and be able, you know, and check them out and go. And so there's an added piece to that, that, you know, if you have an enclosed building, you don't have that same piece if you have multiple buildings. So you work around them, but um, you know, those are some things that we've added um along the way.
And at Crest, we've added the, the doorbell, the locking door system. So students will come and they get buzzed in by the front door. You know, we weren't able to put a vestibule in right now, but we were able to make an adjustment to, to create a safer place. So that kind of goes along with it, you know? We're doing everything we can as we go forward and it's been identified that it's a need and that's what we heard from, as a need just most recently, you know, with Randy's help, we got on right away.
And I think safety isn't always just about kids into the school. Sometimes it's about kids, especially younger kids, like leaving campus.
Absolutely.
So we want to have as minimal, as few choices as, few chances as possible for kids to go out or unknown adults to come in.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I mean, my question, my question is basically, what can we be doing? I, I, I am confident that, that the steps that we've taken and, and continue to take are increasing safety and it's always that balance between, you know, make it, it's a kid friendly place or with safety from outsiders. Um, I just, uh, you know, I mean, looking towards the bond in terms of the vestibular crest and, and enclosing the middle school, um, did we do safety assessments in order to get us to those places? Um, where those recommendations?
Yes, we did it and we presented it up to the board and several years ago and what the buildings haven't changed. Um, but we, yes, and that we are continuing to work off of those um recommendations. Um, a SEEPAD, uh, crime prevention through environmental control or. Yeah, pretty close. Um, the lot has to do with landscaping and the door locks. I mean, it's just, it's little things where we place things that, that we think about kind of behind the scenes.
So I'm kind of cross examining you. So when people are like, when advocates for the bond are saying, we want to complete the middle school, at least one reason is for security and safety to have it a contained building campus, even if it's not fenced, but building contained campus that came out of the assessment and they're not um yelling fire in a crowded theater, it would make our kids that much safer.
Having the kids under one roof is definitely a safer environment.
Thank you. Questions come.
Yeah. Um, on safety, if we looked at uh surveillance cameras recently, it just like the increase in optics and material, you know, AI to then also like monitor real time, like the images and any like suspicious patterns or behavior um has increased significantly. And I'm wondering if it's maybe if we haven't done so, it's an appropriate time to.
Sure. We have, we, we, we've actually demoed some different cameras throughout the district, uh, recording license plates, face recognition, things like that. It doesn't come with a small price tag. And right now that's been a little bit of a challenge for us. Um, we have over three hundred cameras in our district, throughout the district. Um, there, you know,
cameras are not always placed where you want them when you need them, you know, or if you think you're doing the right thing. But um, we've got a really good system out there and we have really good coverage. It's forensic coverage. Our, our cameras were designed to work with the police department. God forbid there's an incident. We want to know where someone is and where they're coming and, and, and where they're at in the building. When we first put this in, it wasn't designed to be, you know, checking every face of every student that comes through the front door. That's not what we're after. We want to know where this person is on our, on our facility so that working with the police department, we can neutralize that threat. So, but yes, we have a great camera system. Is there, there's always room to grow with cameras and I know Andrew can speak to that. We do, um, you know, our, our network is supporting what we have right now. So we're lucky with that.
With possibly perhaps in the future with monitoring, you know, live, there might be opportunities with third party like, you know, vendors.
Sure.
Do that. I can obviously use.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. It'd be very interesting to learn more on it, for sure.
I just want to make a comment related to whatever I said, that you said, uh, I have a kid in the school and I am in this community because I feel that she is. So saying that, I wanted to reassure all the parents that I trust the district and I also know they have a legacy. so saying that, I wanted to reassure all the parents that I trust the district and I also know they have a legacy, uh, with costume. And I have, I went to the high school presentation with Nick, uh, and I feel very confident that our kids are safe in the community. At every step that we have gone, uh, through the years until this moment, that there's always ways to improve and that's what we're thinking with the bond. And at the same time, we have done what it needs. And this is not a static process, not because we have a bond and we bail the school, then we're done. This is every year, this is being assessed. You have exercise with the city. You have a lot of things that this is a constant monitoring and we can always improve. So I wanted to just reassure that I feel safe. I love that the kids can go walking to school, that they're, they're happy and that they have a little bit of outdoor air in a closed building. So, uh, just want to.
Yes. And I, and I can't say enough how, how much work we do with the city of Mercer and the police department on this behind the scenes. We are constantly working behind the scenes. No, it's not something that's front and center. It's not something we share with everybody around it. Yes, we are, we're in the buildings after hours. We're in the buildings on breaks. We're constantly training. There's a turnover of staff in the police department. I'm pretty confident that anybody, whether they've been here for twenty years or they've been here for two months, they know our building and that's, that's huge.
Yeah. And I know that you have a plan and that plan is not public for a reason to keep our kids safe. So, so I also.
And I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I would just, you know, from the physical plant side of things, um, you know what? We always say we don't have the option to just shut down our school. And so it falls a lot on this team and, and keeping it going. But in our Alice acronym is alert and, um, we have a tremendously alert staff who, um, there are some here who are tonight, who I've been heading down a, a road, uh, following a student before because they've decided that they'd rather go home than be at school that particular day. Um, and, uh, so it's everything from that. It's our crossing guards. It's our, um, people on the playground, um, and before and after school stadium. Um, there's a tremendous amount, I just want to reiterate that, of care by the entire staff. Um, and that starts first thing in the morning, sometimes at night, thinking about road conditions or tornadoes that don't come. Um, and, uh, then sometimes that doesn't end until ten thirty at night when that last bus rolls in from a, um, a volleyball game or whatever it might be.
Oh yeah. I was going to say, yeah, I feel like you guys have done a lot of great stuff with like what the resources you have. And like as a student, I feel pretty safe, um, in the building. And like even today, we had like a lockdown during the police officers were in the hallways and like it was really good, um, to practice that. And like sometimes like students will be annoyed with like they've locked doors, but like it does like make us feel safer and feel like no one random can just like walk in. So.
Of course, no other questions? Find the.
We find the superintendent compliance with O E eleven facilities and capital assets.
So I'm. On favor of finding superintendent and compliance, they say, hi? Sorry, sorry. Any one opposed? Any extensions? Two zero students, five zero. On to, um, O E ten instructional program. Uh, this is a 2425 high cap program.
Great. Um, this is that annual plan that we bring forward. Last year, uh, you had a number of different questions and, um, wonderings. And I think you want, you, the ask was to bring back more information. And so we rewatched the video on that to make sure that we were capturing uh, information. And I want to bring in Weston Lucas, uh, who's joined us at the district office this year after serving down at the middle school and then leaving, uh, to Shoreline and then coming back and serving as an assistant principal and now in our learning services team. So Weston, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Rundle. Good evening, everybody. Um, as Dr. Rundle said, I am new in my role this year. So I do want to preface by saying there will likely be questions that I don't have the answer to yet. Uh, as they come up tonight, but I'm happy to come back and I want to preface that, uh, if there are questions, but I, I want to start just by, by talking about the plan as required by OSPI. And so, um, Andrea's, if you could start, uh, start with our present, the, the slide deck. And so this, the OSPI requires that we attest to the services that we're providing and that we, and the tests that we use to provide those services or to identify students for services. And the second slide. And the plan itself is really a, a series of checkboxes. And so as Dr. Rundle referenced, that, um, that is what we're asking for approval on tonight is those checkboxes that to be submitted to OSPI. But I also wanted to provide you information as requested last year around what's happening in the classroom. Are, are our students achieving and are our students growing who are receiving highly capable services? So that's what you'll see tonight. So as submitted to OSPI, we're attesting that we universally screen in K two and five that were compliant in that, uh, expectation. The test that we use to identify students for services are the COGAT Iowa Torrance and featuring classroom data. We have tools and a plan in place to ensure equitable access for multilingual learners and students with disabilities. We provide services in the gen ed setting and in a self-contained program that code thirty-three services. We provide acceleration services and that's actually, that shouldn't say nine twelve, that should say six twelve. Um, for acceleration services, and then we, we provide enrichment activities. And I called out destination imagination. There are many examples of enrichment programs. Uh, but I wanted to call out DI because they had a very successful state tournament just this weekend where nine of our teams won first place designations uh, of, of the teams that went, which is very exciting. So that's what we're attesting to on the plan itself. Um, but, but before we get into some data around achievement and growth, one of the other questions is what's happening in the classroom? And so we have, uh, put together, and I want to do a big thanks to Kara Millsap and Dr. Soini, who are here, uh, who helped to facilitate this video process. We put together a video about the student experience in elementary math and particularly in enrichment and how we use our curriculum and supplemental materials to provide enrichment at the elementary level. Director Glose, we wanted your question first?
Yes. And then the slide said that acceleration is only provided in grade six through twelve. How does that match with the requirements for highly capable that it's itself enhanced instruction and accelerated learning for those first six years during elementary school?
So the acceleration is a but the designation of highly capable under acceleration. So there are students who can qualify under acceleration that happens in six twelve.
So that there is acceleration in elementary school?
Yes, there are, yes, students, there are students who accelerate in math programs and as needed based on the student need. But the designation of high cap under acceleration services starts in six twelve. It's, yeah, it's a, a little bit of a semantics piece there. But acceleration does happen. Yeah, thank you. Does that answer the question?
Partially.
Okay.
And just a quick question on the universally screened K two and five, are there old, uh, it's not an obtained on the fifth grade or is required all of them?
The fifth grade?
Yeah.
It is. So it is a new requirement actually within the last two years that we also screened before students enter sixth grade.
Okay.
So that's new.
And new students?
Yes, new students as well. Yeah, they have the opportunity to, to be screened when they enroll.
And when it comes to the Iowa test, we generally still have about one quarter of second graders that are in the top three percent, um, for both reading and math. What are those numbers? I know historically, like a couple of years ago, COGAT, which I understand is sort of like perhaps the weightiest of the test, the Torrance test is, I guess, its own unique beast. Um, but then about twenty-five percent of students are in the top, well within the top stain nationally. Uh, but I guess we don't know if that's continues to be the case.
I don't have that data tonight with me, but I could certainly get that data. Yeah, absolutely. So I do want to start with a portion of our video that's going to feature our elementary teachers and students talking about their experience with enrichment in the primary grades.
I've been working with Coach Abby every Friday. Abby helped us with grouping our students based off of the diagnostic. And we have been looking at that data as a whole first grade team to group our students so that they could be working either with a paraprofessional in one of the pods, um, on extension work. They also do an activity center and they also do the eye ready number sense that usually takes place at the beginning of a math lesson. We've kind of taken it to a whole new level. The numbers were very wonderful to see looking at the data after the second, um, eye ready diagnostic.
When we do math, we usually do whole group and then a work seat and then stations. And then the stations are, let's see. I think they were eye ready math. A blue work seat, a green work seat, and then back table and a game.
I like Wolf Pack because, um, you get to sit, um, with your friends and you get to learn with teachers.
What I love is the center activities. The center activities have different levels. So it's level A, level B and level C. And they're kind of the same game, but, um, the level of difficulty changes. In the drive, we created a first grade center, uh, library for eye ready games. I have been recording students make a video on how to play the games or the center activities. The students just have to scan the QR code and see how the game is played.
We're going to play shake it and spill it. First you shake it and then you spill it on the plate. Don't flip them over. Just put them on the ten frame. First you count how many little chips you have. One, two, three, four, five, six. But then you put the number up there. Then I'm going to count the red chips. One, two.
One extra thing that our teacher does is use a QR card. In the videos explained in directions. It's hard to understand because there's so many words. And since we're only in first grade, we don't have enough words.
Something that I really wanted to share was the math in action at the end of each unit. It's very creative. All the students love doing this project. There's so much on iReady that you can do as far as extension work. Uh, we are able to do that in small group instruction.
So one of the ways that I have felt supported in teaching math this year is I have attended both the January and February math PD that Dr. Soini and, um, Megan Agastekson were, um, in charge of. And what it was helpful is kind of supporting what I was already doing in my class. I'd already taken out freckle, IBLs or inquiry based learning lessons.
People who live in the city have to pay taxes for living in that city. The money from these taxes is what takes care of paying all of the workers.
And I have had a wonderful group of parents this year that have allowed me to have extension groups with supportive an adult. Um, some of the resources that I use are a combination of, uh, some of the things that Chris Cochrane Ray had put together, Julie Newcomer, when she was the math coach put together. But I like to give that UDL choice for students. So they really like it when they can pick, they can choose a challenge or they can just pick a practice. And they've gotten so good at it that I just offer a sort of a buffet of math and they take something and they practice. And um, I like the conversation I hear them having when they don't understand something or when they do understand something and their, their math talk is terrific.
My favorite types of math is the secret code math types. Because it's like fun having to like figure out the answers of all of these because it's a challenge and it's hard to do because there's regular numbers and code numbers.
My favorite challenges that my sis, my teacher gives me are find the mistake because I like to find mysteries in math.
But my kids are, they're doing great and they have scored really high on, on a lot of domains and they're pretty proud of themselves.
I am getting better at math and I'm like trying new things.
I feel like I've gotten smarter in math because my teacher teaches me new things and I, now I know how to subtract three digit numbers.
So the ways I feel supported as an educator, um, to meet the needs of high achieving students is, um, the, the level of support at the building level. Um, and I've seen this, um, at our PDs, um, Mercer Island School District wide. This is the first time I've been in a district where I left my PDs feeling I could use something the next day. The coaching has been a huge thing, especially being new to the district and new to iReady. I've never used it before. So I've had at least three different coaches helping me find the resources, um, to push the high achieving students and the students who need, uh, have areas for growth. Um, and then to meet the students who are right there at grade level, um, there many resources, more resources than I've ever seen with iReady. Um, and my coaches have shown me how to use those resources to fit my students best. The math in action is great. And then a lot of the enrichment tasks, um, that extends, they're kind of like math games. So it makes it fun for students, um, during our rotations.
I'm way better at math this year because when I first started multiplication, like at the beginning, beginning of the year, I just wanted to, to, um, only work on my ones and zeros in multiplication. But, but now I'm starting, but now I understand the concept more. So now I'm working on more of my twelves and eights.
What helped me is, was, uh, doing, uh, more workbook pages and, uh, doing a little bit of homework every day and, um, doing, uh, this math game where you pull out two cards. There's numbers on the card. You have to multiply the cards.
So the success blocks are, we call them Wolf Pack here at, uh, West Mercer. I'm sure it's different in other schools, but we're utilizing the enrichment and the extensions, um, in those groups. So the third grade team, for instance, we will print out certain extensions. We work together collaboratively to pick what's going to be right for which group.
One thing I really like about success blocks at night.
Wanted to start with that primary piece and, um, it was really important to bring in student and teacher voice tonight to share with you what's happening in the classroom. I know that was one of the questions from last year. Go back to the slide stack.
And as we do that, Kara's here, Kelly's here, is Darren or the other Kelly or Emily here too? Thank you so much.
So, um, on the next slide, for the purposes of tonight's presentations, what I did was group a cohort of students. So these are the students who are receiving high cap services across the district and the district at the high school level. These are students who have at any point qualified for code thirty-two or code thirty-three services. I also wanted to acknowledge that I don't have a, a fun flashy name for those services. And I, that was a question last year. So you will hear me refer to code thirty-two and code thirty-three. Um, as far as the enrollment, if we could just go back one more, uh, just to look at our enrollment, we qualify about twenty-one percent of our students for services and the state, uh, on average qualifies seven percent as reported by OSPI. So our students are high achieving. We are qualifying proportionally there or in that area. Thank you. I also wanted to share some enrollment demographics. So as we think about race and ethnicity, these are their state race and ethnicity codes. Um, our district enrollment and then in the dark blue, we can see our, our students who are qualifying for services. And the next slide, and then additional services as well. So students who may qualify for special education services, multilingual learners.
Do you want to talk about suppression of data?
Yes.
On that last slide?
Can we first just enter?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have a percentage of how many qualify for thirty-two and how many for thirty-three?
I don't have that in the presentation, but I can provide that.
Okay, just to know. Yeah. Or we're providing the services.
Yes, absolutely.
And, uh, we had talked, I think, when we last talked about high cap programs, about breaking down the races at the school level or the district level to, to know what we were talking about when we said two or more races. Is that data that we're able to access yet or is that?
Not today, but I can certainly follow up with that.
Yeah, I'd be very interested to see that breakdown.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's a great question. And I did want to talk about suppression of data. So if you noticed that our, um, black African American's number there is, district enrollment is included. Um, we do have black African American students who are receiving spec, our high ca, highly capable services. Um, but that number is under the guidelines that we would keep that number not listed there for identification purposes. So the guiding questions in this presentation, are we providing services to students identified as being highly capable? And are those services resulting in growth and achievement for learners? So I'm, I'm also keenly aware of all the agenda items that you have tonight. So I, I will move quickly and please stop me as you have questions. The next, oh, at MIHS. So I do want to acknowledge the students self-select into advanced courses or accelerated courses at the high school level. There really is not a cohort model of code thirty-three or thirty-two students at that point because all students can self-select. There's also not a repeated or a benchmark assessment that we could use to necessarily track growth. Their, their students are repeating multiple times. And the data includes any student who has previously identified as receiving high cap services.
Really quick, with receiving services, the additional services, is this, are you, are some of the highly-capable receiving both, like a learner?
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, they are represented in both categories. Yep, they can receive both services. Thank you. So I pulled together some data points that I think are demonstrative of achievement and growth. So what we're looking at here is grade, letter grade distribution of students. So these are students who are receiving, who have at any point received High Cap services. We can see that biggest chunk on the right, 71% at the top, 73% at the bottom. Those are the letter grade A. And then it moves letter grades down towards the left. And then if we look, compare that to the school-wide, we see that that number shifts a little bit to the right. Those numbers on the left grow. So that's indicative of our students who are receiving highly-capable services, their outcome at the end of a semester is starting on the higher range. Next slide. This is SBA data for Grade 10. So this is any student who has taken the SBA at this point at MIHS. On the left is all students in the school. And then on the right is our students who have received highly-capable services. And this was an interesting data point, enrollment in AP and honors courses. So the data indicates here, as far as, we can see the light blue is High Cap. MIHS is represented in dark blue. The students who have received services are more likely to enroll in AP and honors courses at the high school level. As we look at IMS, some considerations. So math at that point is separated from High Cap services as students test or self-select into their math pathway. So there is a placement test. The students then start onto their math pathway. There is a cohort model of services and they receive them in language arts, science, and social studies. And so that group of students are within a self-contained classroom in those select courses. And the instructional model includes Tier 1 common curriculum. So they are getting that common curriculum with supplemental materials and enrichment opportunities for depth. Yeah.
What does that mean in practice in terms of the difference in curriculum, the cohort models? Like, for instance, taking science or social studies. Are the books different or the projects different? And if so, I mean, are the expectations when it comes to homework different?
I would say yes. And as I said, they start with that common curriculum. So there are, as a language arts teacher, there are common books that all students in grade 8 read. The students who are receiving High Cap services have additional texts or supplementing texts that maybe we're not going to do this book that everybody does. We're going to do a different text. And I would say yes, that the expectations of homework and the expectations of achievement are higher in the High Cap classrooms. The data that I pulled here is some Eye-Ready achievement data to demonstrate growth and achievement. If we look at the top-left corner, this, for example, is sixth-grade math in both fall and winter. And then the bottom, are students receiving High Cap services. So we know our students receiving High Cap services are demonstrating that they are scoring higher on the Eye-Ready assessment in those initial tests.
And I have a question. I know that we're talking about High Cap, but the yellow, are we talking, the yellow is below grade level or are at level?
Those are approaching grade level, which is the yellow. Yes, so it is below but approaching. This is seventh-grade math. It's going to be a very similar model there. And then the next slide will demonstrate 8. So we are seeing movement from the left to the right or sort of growth in all the grades. And we're also seeing those bottom-right numbers, which are the High Cap service students and their achievement levels there. Next slide. So this is reading. And so you're going to see similar data points. And similar data points through eighth grade. And then enrollment in math courses. I know this was a question that came up. So students who receive High Cap services are in the light blue. And similarly to the high school level, we can see that they're more likely to be enrolled in an accelerated course at the middle school level. Part of that is the track that is natural as part of the curriculum. And part of that is self-enrollment and testing. And at the elementary level, there are two service models we've talked about, the Gen Ed services, Code 32, and the self-contained model, Code 33. Again, that includes Tier 1 common curriculum for everybody with supplementary materials and experiences for depth, enrichment, and acceleration. And then the elementaries are utilizing flexible grouping strategies to provide extension enrichment as well as intervention. So they assess for a unit. They then place the students in groupings according to how that assessment went. And they're continually monitoring that data. So students are getting what they need based on assessments at the unit level. This is average scores in Eye-Ready math, K5. And I drew the line there to demonstrate the growth piece. The top is all school, all the students. And in the bottom right, we see students receiving High Cap services. Similarly, in reading assessments, 1 through 5. And these are SBA scores from elementary. Same model, top-left is all students. Bottom-right is students receiving High Cap services. And literacy as well. And the data points that I've pulled today, I think, are demonstrative of achievement, both achievement and growth, that our students are achieving at high levels and that they are growing from where they are. And that's due to our incredible staff who are meeting students where they're at with enrichment activities and opportunities and acceleration to help students to grow.
If we can go back just like three slides to the ones that are like hard graphs with like a line. Just for future, I would find it more helpful when we're looking at those two graphs together, like against each other because I can't tell if the slope of the line is like, looks like it's steeper, the High Cap students. But I don't really, it's hard to compare them just with your eyeballs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Honestly, it's too funny. You can go to my own laptop to like sit here and swivel to see what's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I guess I have a comment on that slide in particular or on the reading one. It looks like actually non-High Cap students grow more from kindergarten through fifth grade than High Cap students, which I guess that would be surprising. It seems to me that High Cap students would be highly-capable and you would expect more growth over five years rather than less.
Unless they're reading already when they come in.
Well, and then maybe they're not being challenged for five years, which is the point of highly-capable services. It's the challenge those that are reading when they enter kindergarten.
Seems pretty similar. Christina?
I have, sorry. I think I would like to know a little more on how the, especially the 32 curriculum is applied in the different schools. And if you can explain also what is 32, 32 for those students, how old they think.
Absolutely, yeah.
That would be fantastic.
Code 32 services are served in the students' general education class. So they are grouped with all of their peers and they receive access to enrichment and acceleration opportunities based on that designation. And so I think to your first question of how are teachers deciding when to provide enrichment? So they're assessing by group. And a big conversation among our staff has been, you know, do we start with the assumption if a student has Code 32 services? And this is where we've landed. We start with the assumption that the student is ready until they show us maybe that they need a little bit more support. And maybe in a particular unit of instruction, a student might need to join peers who are at grade level. And having taught in the High Cap program for six years at IMF, I can tell you that our students who are receiving highly-capable services have strengths all over the board and they have areas of growth or opportunities for growth where there may be a unit of instruction that they're not working above grade level. So as students are demonstrating in their assessments, the teachers are pre-assessing, they're grouping based on the assessment data and then meeting the needs with enrichment activities. And then there are always enrichment activities available to our students receiving Code 32 services. And you heard about Math in Action in the video. And that's one example. Math in Action is real-world application of what the students learned in that unit. And it is an enrichment, critical thinking activity that's available to students.
And this question is also related to some that parents have brought in. So if a student tests as highly-capable for math, for example, but not for language, so there's Code 32, how their curriculum will be paired to those who are completely in the 33 program, right? Yeah, and if they're kind of similar in terms of that, once they get to the fifth grader. But also as in having the experience in the middle school, I wonder, what do you see the difference between the two, once they integrate in the middle school? And how they accelerate at the end? Does it matter in that sense? Or is it care? Or does 33 go more faster than 32? Or how is it different?
That's a great question. And Code 32, so our first cohort of Code 32 students will hit the middle school next year. So we don't have data yet to answer the question about where that difference lies or how achievement is happening there. But what I would say is that in both Code 32 and Code 33, there are enrichment opportunities to supplement that Tier 1 instruction if we think about an MTSS model. So all students have access to a rich curriculum, a continuum curriculum. And then there are extra things that are put in to supplement that. More so in the Code 33 class, there may be extra or more supplementary materials. But there are supplementary materials in Code 32 as well. And then within the curriculum, within Benchmark and in Eye-Ready at the elementary level, there are built-in enrichment opportunities and activities that teachers can add for students in 32. So not all students will get Math in Action at the end. But it might be for a Code 32 student who we know needs that.
I was just going to say, and, you know, some of these things, we might be able to better delineate or explain even in a future study session if that's where you want to go. I can sense some of my colleagues and our colleagues jumping at the bit who live this each and every day and have lots of things. And so, you know, not to oversimplify it, but Ann Tomlinson, who does a lot of work around differentiation and has worked across, you know, you can differentiate in three big ways, content, process, and product. And so I think that there's elements of that that you'll see constantly regardless of what the designation of a classroom or a student is in that way. And so those could be, I'm writing down your questions as we go because it might be an opportunity to bring some educators forward who are in it along with Weston and others who are helping to lead that each and every day. But you're doing a great job explaining it, especially in elementary as a middle school person. Very exciting, Weston.
I wanted to just make a comment and then recognize Lucy. It would be great to hear back from you, not next year, but in two more years, once that first batch of Code 32 has hit. And then you can compare the two cohorts if you can do it without, you know, like revealing data that's confidential. So I think that would be really, really interesting. And we'll know a lot more about kind of like how the program has served those two different groups. And my question's a bit more around like the social strategy of High Cap. I know at least when I was in elementary school, High Cap kids were very like excluded from the rest or at least excluded themselves. So that was particularly in elementary school. I don't know if there's, has there been work that has been done on that to like get those kids to integrate and stuff?
Well, so under Code 33, that's a self-contained model. So those students do, starting in third grade, they move together as a cohort. And when I was teaching in the middle school, that was something. But those students were in the same classes from third through eighth grade. And so there is a lot of bonding that happens there and a lot of peer interaction within that group. At the middle school, obviously, things open up and students take a variety of electives. At the elementary level, I think that's a really good question. I know our teachers have worked really hard to integrate SEL and opportunities for students to reflect on building relationships and learning those skills so that when they are in those common shared experiences at the elementary level, recess, lunchtime. And also sometimes within the groupings as well. I know that at some of our schools, the teachers are working across the grade level. So whether you're in a Code 33 class at Lakewood, they're also partnering with a Gen Ed class next door when they do their math groups and meeting the needs of students where they're at. And so they are partnering more with other students. That's a great question.
Yeah, that's great. I just remember like being in elementary school at a friend that moved into High Cap and then it was like really good and contained that friendship after that, even when like moving into the High Cap class. You're like, man, kind of being different than everyone else, which is really.
That's an important consideration.
Third grade's, you can look because I've got people right here. I know when you've done field trips at Lake Ridge, you've all gone on those, fourth and fifth grade. Everyone goes on those. Am I getting that right still? Okay, great.
Yes, it's very intriguing.
Thank you.
With, well, with your permission, I'd like to do the last half of the video or if I guess I would ask you.
Okay. I hope it's more private. Before your Halloween.
Spare no expense on the cost in budget for the video.
Room is that it's a great opportunity to get student buy-in when it comes to extension work. So what that looks like is really making the worksheet, you know, more than just a task on a worksheet. So having the opportunity to get students involved, ask questions about the task, So, um, having the opportunity to get students involved, ask questions about the task, um, connect it to real-world problems. Um, and then, you know, there's that follow-through. So they really get the chance to know that they're gonna meet with an adult four times a week and then have a chance to check in about, about their progress, push their thinking. And then as the year goes on, they really get the chance to, um, take what the adult is modeling for them and take it on themselves. Um, so it really becomes, um, more independent as the year goes on and as they grow confident with those kind of skills.
Ms. Curtis gives us some math challenges after we're done with the workbook pages. The, the challenges are really fun too. Um, so like sometimes you get to like go on the internet, search about cool cars and then you write like the, like how much the gases and like, yeah, other stuff. And also we have, sometimes we have, uh, escape rooms, like, um, so you have to solve problems to escape a room and then it's just really fun.
Something that challenges me is the math challenges. They just are like what we're working on right now, except they're like a little bit more tricky. If we're doing long division right now, it would be like long division, but it would have like, um, a remainder and then it'd be like, and then compare. And then you should do a different one and then like compare them. So they're like harder.
And then another thing I really find really beneficial is keeping groups really flexible so that they get support for certain units when they need and then go back to always get a chance to get more enrichment at certain points.
At Lakewood, we have in our fourth grade high cap, a walk-to-math model where the students are then working with other students from other homeroom classrooms. So again, we're introducing, uh, different partnerships and different strategies to work through these, uh, problems.
Fine. I can find a solution by, and take a look what they have on the backside. How is this going to help you solve the problem?
Uh, one of the enrichment options that we use in our walk-to-math model is the math in action. The math in action takes the skills that they've learned and then encourages students to apply those in multiple real-world application scenarios. Students are encouraged to use manipulatives to help them solve these problems and, and make these abstract concepts concrete.
Uh, I think I am like growing as a mathematician, mostly in cooperation. Maybe I've, I think I'm working better with my partner.
And, uh, what did you do for the third, uh, in the, I need to find?
So then you have to find the kind of like the interval, 'cause the road is one and a half miles long. But like, depending on the fraction you chose, you will, um, so there's, it's one and a half miles long. So then you basically divide one and a half by your, the fraction you chose.
Math in action provides challenge for me because it like, it shows so like real-life problems. So I can actually like visualize what's happening.
And most times during math in action, it's a multi-step problem. And multi-step problems are like harder 'cause, uh, you have to like visualize it and you have to, uh, go step by step. And then you have to take notes and try in different ways. 'Cause then if you get mixed up, the problem might be completely wrong.
Yeah, and it's learning should be fun.
Yeah.
We go to the last slide in the slidespan. We've looked today very quickly at some data around achievement and growth. And then we've heard from students at the elementary level and staff around enrichment opportunities and how we are meeting the needs of our high-achieving learners. Um, but I also wanted to go to strength and opportunities that I see in the program, being new in my role and, uh, through, through this data analysis and in talking with teachers. So some strengths I'd like to point out is that our data does indicate that students receiving services are achieving at very high levels, that they are, um, more likely, the students who receive services to enroll in advanced or accelerated courses at the secondary level. And the staff at the elementary are engaging in professional development around providing enrichment or extension opportunities within the curriculum and with supplemental materials. I think those are some strengths of our program. Opportunities that I see in our data, are we identifying students for highly capable service proportionally to our enrollment or are there some barriers that we can identify and remove? And I think that work will be ongoing as we look to remove barriers for student access. Uh, this came out of conversation with code thirty-three teachers at Lakewood. Um, when I met with them, um, one of the questions that they have is, do they have the supplemental materials they need to provide extension and enrichment in a cohesive and programmatic way? So that's something that we're looking at as a team, um, for supplemental materials. And then the last question is, do we have the right tools specifically at the high school level? I talked about that assessment piece, that it's important when we're measuring growth to have the same assessment that's benchmarked over time. Um, that's not necessarily something we have at the high school level right now. Is that something we want to look for? Is an opportunity there? So with that, I, um, that's kind of the close of the presentation is strength and opportunities. And I turn it to you.
I, I, I would like to know, um, demographics of gender and especially for, uh, thirty-two, like divided by those that only do math or those that do, uh, literacy and the same for thirty-three, of course. Uh, but just to see if, if there is a difference in gender.
And when we, um, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about this because we're kind of sh- shifting the fundamentals a little bit. Um, but that is a perfect addition to fundamental five on the data on that. And so, um, we already report out on gender. I don't know if we do it by thirty-two and thirty-three. So we will, we could add that though, but that's a perfect place for that. Um, yeah, I find the I-ready data concerning. That the growth for highly capable students throughout elementary school is actually less than non-highly capable students. It would, to me, suggest that we're, that seemed that absolute growth is less in the two slides, slides twenty-one and twenty-two. To me, suggests a problem.
I will say, for me, it also shows how the other programs are also working. And that this case that maybe not qualified in kindergarten might just be a very capable of learning. So we have kids and I think that without looking at the data in details, there is not a condition that I can grow from this.
So, I mean, building on what Christina was saying, um, when I look at this chart and I agree completely, I guess it would be very useful to have this chart as one colorful tent and so two. Um, but it just sounds like, you know, the highly capable student is being met at a higher level if you look at the starting score and sort of being guided along their learning journey from that higher level, which is sort of my internal working definition of highly capable as it applies to my own children. So like, you know, like that it's want them to be able to learn at the level where they are and learn at a steady rate. And it looks to me like that's what's happening here. Um, so, you know, always interested to hear how we can better support these programs. But, um, to me, it's telling a story of capable learning happening both in our general ed and our highly capable programs. Based on this colorful tent.
They're not going for exponential growth. But they're gaining every year. They're not like, yeah.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that there isn't misinformation being provided. I'm, I'm looking at the chart and, and in, in our, in our gen ed students, our non-highly capable designation, it starts at three fifty-seven, um, in kindergarten and grows to four ninety-six in grade five. And our high cap students, three ninety-five in, uh, this is for math, three ninety-five in kindergarten and grows to five twenty-nine. So I, I'm seeing a higher rate of growth for high cap students and, and I don't, I mean, I wanna see all students grow, um, and I would expect that, you know, we, we have a big misconception between highly capable and high achieving. And we have a huge proportion of our students who are high achieving and, and that's reflected right here in our, in the gen ed statistics. So I, I think it's a big misinformation that the director of blow was just provided that it's a, that it's a slower rate of growth 'cause the numbers don't support that.
It was marginally approximately equal for math than you're reading.
It's not as much, it's greater. It's greater. It's over a hundred for high cap and it's less than a hundred for.
No.
Yeah, I, I said the numbers out loud.
Three fifty-seven to four seventy-six.
Just use the data that's accurate.
Like, three fifty-seven to four seventy-six is more than a hundred.
Yeah, but three ninety-five to five twenty-nine is a higher number.
Just do the math.
Just the higher number, okay. We have a lot of information. We have a really lot of public input. So we need to move on before we vote. I am gonna propose a name for these programs. Because I think this is probably the third or fourth year where I've said this. Um, I just, the amount of time it even just takes to say code thirty-two, code thirty-three, like in this presentation alone, it's just a waste of time. Um, my suggestion, since it's the only difference, I know you're trying to avoid any kind of designation that makes one better than the others, since the only difference in the two names, the two formal names is a two and a three, is we call it the duo program and the trio program. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. We need a motion.
Yes, we need a program.
And you can approve the grant.
Yes, um, this is approving our district's municipal state, right? Correct that we are going to municipal states?
Yes, and the final step is for, for the approval of the high cap.
Yes, and just for the record, I disagree. I think, I think any name that you're gonna put on it is gonna be used. There already is code thirty-two and thirty-three, but those are the actual state classifications. So let's just be accurate because for the years and it's changed, it just becomes a hierarchy.
I just can't remember which.
I hear you. I get it. I get it. Just look it up. Look it up, 'cause otherwise it creates a hierarchy, even more of a blatant hierarchy. Trio is better than duo. And you're gonna get there by the way, so. All right, that's the thimers.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the district's municipal.
My motion, so then. Is that it? All in favor, say aye, students. Board members, aye, any of us? Uh, anybody else seen? Okay, that is two zero students, four two one.
Thank you, Weston. And I saw Dr. Sweeney was in there too, right when I started laughing. All of a sudden I saw you back there, so thank you as well. So thank you to all of you.
Just before we get started, Fred, on recognitions. I just wanted to touch the board briefly because we have twenty-eight people signed up for three-minute public comment and I have done math. And, um, we are looking at, um, if you factor in like twenty to thirty seconds in between each speaker, we're looking at almost two hours of public comment. And there are seven other important things that we need to discuss tonight, including budget, policies, so forth. So my, we, I never like to limit who's able to speak, but I am proposing to limit public comments tonight to two minutes per person, which would put us still at one hour and ten minutes of public comments. I'm asking the board because the problem is we're gonna run into the, the limit of how late this meeting can go and like where this may not be. If everyone's up for two hours of public comment and some of these other items need to get in forward, I'm fine with that. I'm just. If we're gonna do it, I'm gonna tell people now so they have a little time. If they have a three-minute speech, they can.
What do you think? Could we ask people who are speaking on the same topic with the same POV to consolidate to a representative speaker as for our bank of events?
If you're doing that for one topic, you can't do it for all the topics. And there's multiple people here, so I have to speak on the ledger. I guess, I guess I'll just ask people, if you can be briefer than three minutes, be briefer. And if you can, if the, if the show was hostile to get the next person queued up so they can just like snip right in when, when we get to public comments, that would be helpful. From a little time that way. Okay, thank you. Okay, recognition time.
Great. Uh, why don't we go ahead and, Ian, if you can bring forward our. All right, well, they're not all here, however, uh, wanna say a few words and then turn it over to Ms. Rockell to, uh, talk a little bit more. But, um, we had eleven IMS and MIHS choir students, uh, uh, who were selected for the Washington Music Educators Association All-State and All-Northwest Choirs. Um, two of those students, sophomore Brody Newcomer and junior Shelby Conway, um, also just recently returned from Dallas, uh, where they've participated, um, in a national competition. But there were approximately three hundred, uh, students, uh, who impressed the judges through a rigorous blind audition process and earned these coveted spots. So I wanna turn it over to you, Ms. Rockell, talk a little bit about the students. And then students wanna hear name and grade and, and your experience in choir. But, um, quite an accomplishment, especially as the program has continued to grow and more and more students are being recognized for their achievements.
Yeah, so each year we get to send students to the WNBA All-State Choirs, which is really special, a really great opportunity for these students to be amongst some of the best musicians in their choirs and get to make music under really excellent conductors and put on a culminating performance that is always just a great bucket filler for not only their educators, but their families that come and support them. Every other year, we also get to, um, honor students in All-Northwest. So just pulling from a bigger pool for those All-Northwest Choirs. And they'll tell you which choir they were in. And then the thing that we really just want to shout from the rooftops and be so excited about is our two students who traveled to Dallas last week and got to be part of these ACDA All-National Honor Choirs. These are the most excellent honor choir opportunities that our country and that the ACDA organization has to offer. And the process for all of these auditions is very independent and students take on this enrichment opportunity, they practice on their own. It's that opportunity for them to add that extra level of rigor to their choir experience. And they all took it on with excitement and they go and they are a great representation of our school district and of our schools and I couldn't be more proud. Um, Shelby is one of our All-National Singers. Brody Newcomer unfortunately trapped me, you know, so musician and athlete and many other things. But, um, the, the national experience, Shelby was in a choir where the acceptance rate was only fourteen percent. Um, and from the Northwest, there were a very few amount of singers that got chosen. So, um, just, I am very proud, as you can see. And these students are just exceptional musicians, singers, people, and really happy that we could send them to these experiences. Um, we'll start with Emline and they'll say their name and their grade and what choir they were in, Allstate. Uh, and then if they wanna say something extra, I told them they could as well. Go ahead, Emline.
Um, my name is Emline. I'm in the sixth grade and I was in the Allstate Junior Honor Choir.
My name is Shelby. I'm in eleventh grade and I was in the All-Northwest and National Choir.
Um, my name is Amalia. I'm in sixth grade and I was in the Allstate Junior Choir.
My name is Paige. I'm in eighth grade and I was in the Allstate Mixed Choir.
Um, my name's Amahida. I'm in twelfth grade and I was in the All-Northwest Choir.
My name is Toly. Uh, I'm in twelfth grade and I was in the Allstate Symphonic Choir. And I will take Ms. Rockell on, uh, the ability to just say a couple of words 'cause thank you so much for your continued support, uh, for the choir program. Um, I've been in choir, this'll be my ninth year. I started in third, fourth grade and I haven't stopped. And let me just say, it is life-changing. I can't even imagine who I would be without people like Ms. Rockell and Ms. Kurtinbach at West Mercer who played such pivotal roles in making me feel accepted at school, making me feel comfortable, letting, letting me even like talk with more resonance and be able to shout at people better. Like, it's just, there's, there's a lot of benefits to choir. Um, so many more than the ones that I just said. So thank you so much. Your support means the world to me and my peers and I'd say anybody who has had the amazing opportunity to sing with any member of our music teachers here at Mercer Island School District. So thank you.
All right, well, thank you for always making sure that you recognize the amazing work that our students are doing in so many different facets of their educational experience. So, um, that's all that we have for you tonight.
Thanks, Ms. Rockell, and congratulations to all of you. We're gonna give you a round of applause and then we're gonna have you walk behind the board for a picture, okay? So please join in a round of applause.
I will say in the news finds out, uh, people should go next week to the Find Our Showcase.
Yes, Find Our Showcases next week. You get to see it all.
Okay, here we go. On me, three. Three, two, one, three, two, one, three, two, one. Parents? Three, two. Still see one camera pulled up? So a couple of the recognitions, um. Um, Kyle Gerstle, you had heard about last meeting. Um, you'll see him on your agenda tonight. And then the KMIH and, uh, MIHS TV students, um, due to some, uh, illnesses, they're gonna actually come at the next meeting, so that's why they're not here tonight. So we'll, uh, move them. April, uh, is an exciting month, lots to celebrate. Uh, National Arab American Heritage Month, uh, National Autism Acceptance Month and World Autism Month. Uh, we have Passover, Good Friday and Easter, uh, Public School Volunteer Week for all of our tremendous volunteers, April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, our School Bus Driver Appreciation Day on the twenty-second and National Administrative Professionals Day on April twenty-third. So we'll have lots to celebrate, uh, in the month of April. So those are our recognitions. President.
Okay, our first speaker tonight is Shelley Sage. Oh, sorry, Shelley, I apologize. Go, go to the lecture, but I have to read something. Sorry. The, uh, sorry, sorry, sorry. To read our new thing. School board, school board meetings are business meetings that the Mercer Island School District Board of Directors held in public. The board recognizes the value of the public being able to observe these meetings and to provide comment within the following guidelines. Public comment is an opportunity for community members to provide input to and feedback on the work of the board and the district. It is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public. Board directors do not respond directly to questions or comments posed during public comment. However, the board's silence should not be taken as agreement or disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The board may later direct the superintendent to respond to issues raised during public comment. Members of the public offering comment must adhere to the same level of stability that the board expects of itself as specified in board policies. This includes not using threatening or profane language in comments and not directing individual attacks against staff, students, administrators, or board members. Please note that comments have the potential to violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. Comments that name or identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parents or guardian. Speakers who violate any of these rules will be cut off and their speaking time ended. Speakers should state.
Speakers should state their full name for the record at the start of their comment and are encouraged to indicate their relationship to the district. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment and additional time for using an introvert. If you are present at tonight's meeting, wish to make a comment and have not yet completed a public input form, please complete the form and give it to Michelle Wheeler. Link forms are available at the entrance to the boardroom. Cut-off to register for online public comment is one hour before the start of the meeting. Shelley?
Hello, my name is Shelley Sage and I am the senior school nurse here in the district. I've been here 15 or 17 years and losing track. I'm currently located primarily at the high school level. I'm an EDISA certified nurse out here to speak in support of our classified nurses with regards to a proposed reduction in force of personnel. These nurses do an amazing job for every single student in this district. They touch every single life in that of these kids that are here. They do the hearing screenings, the vision screenings, which means they're picking up the kids that have hearing loss and it's been not detected yet that's happened. They're picking up kids that have underlying vision issues that need to be addressed at a very early age and have been missed by pediatrician and they get on the phone and call those parents and get those kids into care right away. They are experts in student development and pediatric development. They, many of them have extensive clinical experience and they bring it to work with them every single day in their care of these kids to keep them safe and send them home to their parents safely at the end of the day. I can't do my job without what these people do theirs. They work hard to support each other. If one nurse is absent due to illness or scheduled absences, they'll slide in to cover one another. They work really seamlessly as a team. They're very caring and compassionate and they very much work to support to keep these kids in the classroom, to see all this wonderful learning that you've all been speaking about this evening. That's their mission, is to keep these kids in class and learning, and they do a fabulous job at it. And I would very much wish to hope that we can still continue to keep them here in the district. Many of them are also community members that are involved very keen in their games and with an incredible skill set, that it would be really a tragic loss to lose them. I will lead them to the next person.
After that, it's Seth Lang, so Seth, after Danielle.
After Danielle.
Yep, just so we knew.
You're cute, though.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Librarians are unsung heroes in education, guiding students not just through the world of information, but also through their own learning journeys. Librarians provide essential resources that help students develop critical thinking skills. In a world where information is abundant and often very overwhelming, librarians teach students how to navigate this vast ocean of knowledge. According to a 2020 study by the American Association of School Librarians, students who have access to a school librarian perform better academically. Specifically, students with school libraries stacked by full-time, certificated librarians scored 10% to 20% higher on standardized tests than those in schools without full-time librarians. In our digital age, librarians are key in promoting digital literacy, the ability to effectively and responsibly navigate the digital world. As more and more of our lives move online, students need to understand not just how to find information, but how to critically evaluate it, use it ethically and stay safe. A 2018 report from the American Library Association found that 87% of librarians actively teach students about digital citizenship, which includes topics like online privacy, cybersecurity, and responsible social media use. I know we love our data. Librarians also foster critical digital skills, teaching students how to conduct online research, discern between trustworthy and misleading information, and create content responsibly. With the rise of misinformation and fake news, these skills are more important than ever. Students who are taught digital literacy are more likely to develop strong problem-solving skills and are better prepared for college and the workforce. I can speak directly to this as a teacher in the high school building. Daniel Kylie has essentially co-taught with me the last three years on an inquiry question slash research project for my senior English class. He takes the time to collaborate with me on the assignments, prepping and planning for how to introduce the material to the students. My students spend two to three class periods in the library with him, learning how to access online databases, learning research technology being used at the college level, how to decipher the authority and authenticity of the different resources, how to organize and sift through numerous sources, and how to access library resources outside of the high school building. Without him, I would be teaching myself to do this, adding to my already extensive English teacher and drama teacher workload. Daniel has fostered the library as a safe, inclusive space where students from all walks of life can find a sense of belonging, community, collaboration, and connection. I know for a fact that the library at MIHS is a study space, a safe space, a creative space, and a gathering space for our students. Daniel Kylie and all our other certificated librarians in the district are mentors, guides, and advocates for lifelong learning. All of our students deserve and need to have certificated librarians in their buildings.
Well, that's all I can say. The last school board meeting, I mentioned that School Board President Maggie Ty had stated that there was no existing social media policy, and that is why members of the school board didn't review Director Jody Lee's post for appropriateness. So they didn't comment on it, even though they knew what it said. Director Jody Lee got away with posting anti-Semitic remarks, the entire board and superintendent ignored it because as President Maggie Ty said, quote, "There was no social media policy", unquote, to which I stated, "That's horrible or pathetic." Immediately after the meeting ended, President Maggie Ty said, "I didn't say that." Well, I have sitting right here her email that she sent to me showing that what I'm saying is true and that her statement was not true, that she never said it. She did say it. I don't lie to anybody publicly. There was a conversation about 20 seconds of my last school board comments that were not presented to the public. Truth is, the only people that could hear it were the ones physically in the board meeting. President Maggie Ty wrote a letter to the Mercer Island Reporter stating that it was a Zoom issue and that my comments were broadcast to everybody watching it on the record. That is a straight-up lie. My 20 seconds were cut out of my comments and were broadcast. It was an accident done by someone else. I accept that, no problem. We're all human. That person's wonderful. President Maggie Ty said, "Get your facts straight" in that letter to the editor. Well, she doesn't have a clue about the facts and states things that are totally false to cover up things. I have the written proof of that as well. Do you see a pattern here of the truth not coming from the press and the school board? Who does that remind you of? There's going to be more later. This school board at times is dysfunctional, according to our school superintendent Fred Run. Now, I know he's going to say that he didn't say it, but I have right here an email in which he said exactly that. We'll run this all later. This behavior's not going to help you with the bond. Back to the real issue, Director Jody Lee's anti-Semitic postings. The real issue is the fact that she doesn't understand her horrible postings damaged our community and now her students are aware of it. She was smiling while I talked at the last board meeting about what I was saying regarding antisemitism. Watch the video, you'll see. Again, I cannot say sorry. Again, you, again, I say you cannot sorry yourself out of this situation. Not one person in the Me Too movement that was accused of saying things that were horrible got to sorry him away, they quit or were fired. You posting anti-Semitic things caused a lot of concern amongst our Jewish population and now students at the high school. Students at the high school all know now that a school board director posted anti-Semitic comments and the school board did nothing, didn't even say to her, "You're out of line." Director Jody Lee, you owe it to this community to quit this school board, stop the pain you're causing to our community. It's not going to go away. The school board is a mess. It's causing our students' grades to go down. It's causing big concerns in our community. You ranked the worst administration out of the top seven school districts. I want to remind you again, the superintendent said at times, "Our school board is, quote, dysfunctional. That's the last thing we need." How can we ever trust you with 150 billion of our dollars? More in the paper.
Who's trouble? No, you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Liam Chester.
And then Brett Halsel. My name is Liam Chester and I'm a senior at Mercer Island High School. I could discuss the professional and educational value of librarians, how they're consistently some of the most immensely knowledgeable and enthusiastically helpful members of our learning community, or how they're a service for teachers and students alike, or how they enrich and deepen the curriculum in conjunction with students' classroom learning. And that's all true and I'm confident that any student or teacher would swear to it, but I think it's more appropriate for an educational professional to speak to their educational value. Instead, I'd like to speak to their personal, human value, to what librarians mean to developing youth such as myself and the impact they can have on us. When I was even younger than I am today, the kindness, wisdom, and empathy of my elementary school librarian shaped my identity. By suggesting new ideas I hadn't thought of and recommending books I hadn't read, and providing a safe space for me to be wrong and learn and grow, she brought me into a world I had never dreamed of and is the reason that I know what I want to do with my life. Her guidance also led me to become a prodigious reader and later writer, which has been a great, though difficult to define, value to me, even if it bugs the hell out of my friends when I correct their spelling or grammar. It goes deeper than that, though. In communities without support for mental health like we have, it's in large part librarians that shoulder that burden with their constant presence and superhuman ability to listen. But they aren't somehow obsoleted or outmoted by things like our R and R. They're complimentary, and only with both can we holistically support the mental health and development of our youth. As fantastic as the R and R is, it's also very clear with what it is. Kids and teenagers don't always like seeking support for their mental health. It can feel like failure, it can feel like weakness, it can be embarrassing, but chatting with a librarian doesn't present these hurdles. There are a million reasons to talk to librarians, and if the conversation drifts, how stressed I am, having trouble sleeping, well, that's just how the conversation went. With how kind and inviting librarians tend to be is hardly a surprise conversations can water. When I'm having personal or social or emotional struggles, I know that I can turn to librarians for help, that they'll listen when I need someone to listen, that they'll help when I need help. Librarians have shaped who I am, kept me sane when times are rough, and are some of the most compassionate, welcoming, graceful, patient, and accepting people I know. They're a foundation of our community. We're better off with them and we'd be worse off without them. Thank you.
Next up is Brett Halsel, followed by Sarah Sense Wilson.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brett Halsel. I'm a senior at Mercer Island High School, ASB Vice President, and I'm staying in Rock Sioux and bonded with the Waukesha. Today, I will be speaking about Native boarding school education in our district, along with my native peers at the Urban Native Educational Alliance. I would also like to say that we stand with those here today speaking on behalf of funding for school libraries and nurses. I'm also in the sentence of Indian boarding school survivors George Watkins, Shiel Nell, and Ellen Lagard, who both went to Flandreau School, boarding school. Even though these boarding schools are an instrumental part of US history, the truth behind them remains largely unknown. These were industrial schools, places not dedicated to improving the lives and education of their students, but dedicated to fundamentally changing who these students were at their core. A problem across not just our state, but our entire nation is the lack of information and education about the true atrocities that occur at these institutions, a problem that needs to be addressed. We have methods such as assemblies to educate on issues like these, yet we don't have anything for native boarding schools. The Native community and organizations are asking and willing to provide resources and help with increasing the education on this matter. All you have to do is say yes. We are here to help move beyond the simple words of a land acknowledgement and to take action. I ask you today to implement boarding school education to help inform the students and lift up the, and lift up the community you serve, ensuring that the atrocities of these schools are learned from and never occur again. Thank you.
Hana Petu, Washte, Metakiapi, Kokipapeye, Machiapie, Sarah Sense Wilson, Ma'ogalala Kota, Oyate. Hello, everybody. My name is Sarah Sense Wilson. I'm a member of the Ogalala Nation. I'm also a grandmother and I'm a lifelong resident of the King County area. I serve as the Urban Native Education Alliance elected chair, and UNEA is a grassroots, Native-led, community-based, student-centered organization. We've been around for over 18 years and our purpose really is to provide cultural support services and educational assistance and also advocacy as we are sharing today in support of boarding school education. Our, our 18-year-old organization supports Native students' success and we are a model for uplifting the voices of Native students while providing responsive, culturally responsive mentorship, tutoring, and a variety of educational, cultural, and leadership and academic opportunities. So I'm here today to advocate for Mercer Island School District to adopt UNEA Resolution Number Nine, Boarding School Education Across All Ages and Schools, and to designate September 30th as Every Child Matters Day or, or In Shirt Day. The Boarding School Resolution brings voices and truth to a lengthy 100-year era of US genocide and forced assimilation policies. This resolution was co-created by the Native students, some of which are here today, parents, educators, elders, survivors of boarding school, and the National Native American Boarding School Healing Coalition. We stand together to urge Mercer Island School District to join the growing movement across Turtle Island in taking actionable steps to educate all students about boarding school era and the atrocities endured by boarding school survivors and in remembrance of those who passed away due to the conditions they were subjected to. Mercer Island School District Leadership has an opportunity to support this resolution and bring truth, justice, and healing to survivors, descendants such as myself, and all student learners within your institution. We urge you to stand with us on the right side of history and make the right decision to uphold your core values through action, collaboration, and genuine commitment to quality education for all. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Caitlin Jordan, who will be followed by Tia Hiller.
My name is Caitlin Jordan. I'm Colville and Lichliko Jibwe. I grew up not knowing much about Native American boarding schools. I had only heard them mentioned by family and community members, but never in detail. In high, in school, I was taught Native, or typical Native history. I was taught about the First Thanksgiving, Crazy Horse, Sitting Bull, and Saka Jewyan, Lewis &amp; Clark. I can't ever recall learning about boarding schools until learning about them very briefly in my eighth grade social studies class. It wasn't until a few years ago when I started to learn more about boarding schools, I learned that my grandmother had attended boarding school and despite growing up having a close relationship with her, I never knew she was in boarding school. After learning about that, I took it upon myself to learn about boarding schools and quickly realized why she never mentioned it before. I recently was asked by a friend why there are so little Native American families who speak their traditional languages at home compared to families who speak Spanish or other languages. I explained that it's because of boarding schools. So much of our culture was stolen by boarding schools due to the children not being allowed to speak their traditional languages and not being allowed to practice their cultural traditions. The aftermaths of boarding schools show up through every single Indigenous person today through generational trauma and disconnection from their culture. Boarding school education needs to be mandatory as the atrocities Indigenous people have faced and still face cannot go untapped to another generation.
Next speaker is Tia Hiller, who will be followed by Kelsey Joyce.
Hi, I'm Tia Hiller. I'm cleaning, hiding, singing, going to school. I'm here to read Resolution Nine, the Resolution of Urban Native Education Alliance, Clay Skye, Native Youth Council, and Native Warrior Athletics, calling for boarding school education in all educational institutions in Washington State. Whereas we, the members of the Urban Native Education Alliance, Clay Skye, Native Youth Council, and the Native Warrior Athletics invoke the blessings of the Creator and all of our efforts to advocate for the Indian boarding school education and Every Child Matters Day in all K schools in Washington State. And whereas between the early 1800s and the 1960s, hundreds of thousands of American Indian, Alaska Native, and Hawaii Native children were removed from their families and tribes and... and tribes and based on over 523 Indian boarding schools operated by the federal government and churches. And whereas Indian boarding schools attempted to destroy Native cultures through assimilation practices and federal policies aimed to kill the Indian and save the man, the federal Indian boarding school policy was expressly intended to accomplish cultural genocide, the systemic, sorry, destruction of Indigenous identities, traditions, ceremonies, spiritual language. And whereas many Native children died at Indian boarding schools and were interred in ceremonies and unmarked graves at these schools away from their ancestral land, the Indian-American and Alaska Native children were not given traditional and respectful burials. We honor and remember the names of all Indian children, including Buffalo Chief, Starboy, Swarland Soldier. And whereas many Indigenous communities continue to experience intergenerational trauma compounded by systemic oppression, racism, along with spiritual, cultural, and familial disruption due to Indian boarding school policies. And whereas September 30th is recognized as Every Child Matters Day, also known as Orange Shirt Day, a day of remembrance of both survivors and victims, Every Child's Matters Day serves to acknowledge the impact of intergenerational trauma on individuals, families, and communities due to the everlasting trauma of boarding schools across Turtle Island. And then another youth will read the rest with me.
For this permission, I'd like to swap with Daniel Willard, who is supposed to be directly after me, who will be reading the rest of the resolution.
Sure. Sorry, what's your name?
I'm Kelsey Joyce.
You're Kelsey? Okay, sure.
Yeah, sorry.
And then after Daniel will be Eve Hampton.
So I'll go after Daniel, and then you'll go after me.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hi, my name is Daniel. I'm from Al, and I live in Delaware. Whereas Every Child Matters Day, also known as Orange Shirt Day, is recognized across Indian country as a day to wear orange as a way to affirm that Every Child Matters Day is an occasion discussion and education on the truth of Indian boarding schools. Therefore, be resolved that UNEA hereby advise all Washington State K-12 education institutions, both public and private, to educate students in the history of the United States federal boarding school policies through the wet experience of boarding school survivors and other primary issues such as dark memories, research, time, and time, and so on. Travel historians, travel museums, national museum of American Indian Native knowledge beyond a sixty degree, and a national boarding school hero collection organization now be finally resolved that UNEA will advocate for both public and private school institutions throughout Washington State to promote boarding school curriculum, educate students, staff, and educators, and affect Native boarding schools into designing September theories as Every Child's Day for Orange Shirt Day members and travel to boarding school survivors and victims. UNEA hopes to help all also boarding school integration, trauma, education, reverence, and acknowledgement.
So Kelsey, and then Eve, who's next, please.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You want to scooch up?
Thank you. Hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Kelsey Joyce. I'm a Mercer Island resident. I'm also the mother of Rhett Halsel, who spoke earlier. I am not of Native American descent, but my husband and obviously children are, and I am here to speak in support of the resolution that was just presented by these amazing young people. In addition to Rhett, I have a Mercer Island class of 2023 graduate, and with this permission, I'm going to read an excerpt from an essay that he wrote while he was a student here. "In the third grade, I had to do an immigration project on a country where I had ancestry. I chose Norway, but my brother chose the Ojibwe Nation. My teacher rejected my brother's choice, deeming it too hard. At the time, I didn't fully understand why he couldn't do his project on the Ojibwe Nation, but as I grew older, I began to see the flaws of the project and the deeper problems within my school's education system. Not everyone has an immigration story. While an Ojibwe immigration story would have been impossible, it would have been easy for my brother to tell an Ojibwe migration story, my family's journey from Minnesota to Washington State. That story starts at the Flandreau Indian School in South Dakota." I'm gonna skip the whole rest of it till the very last sentence. "No one else's brother should be made to feel that his Native American heritage is less than anyone else's, his ancestors' stories aren't worth sharing, or his family's experiences aren't part of the collective American history." That's the end. And I highlighted that portion of that essay because I want to point out that this is not an issue far away to other people long ago. The Native boarding school era and the associated attempts to eradicate culture and history of Native Americans impact Mercer Island students and Mercer Island curriculum. I know that there are some concerns about the timing of this resolution, given the current national political climate, as well as heightened tensions on the island of funding and bond issues. To the former, I would point out that this is a bipartisan issue. There is currently pending before the U.S. Senate a bill for the creation of a Native boarding school healing commission that is championed by a Republican senator from Arkansas and a Democratic senator from Massachusetts, and has recently passed unanimously out of committee. To the latter issue, I would simply say that this is long overdue, and there is never a wrong time to do the right thing. Thanks.
Be on camera, but you guys can hear me. Okay. My name is Eve Hampton, and I grew up on Mercer Island, attending West Mercer, IMS, and MIHS. After living out of state for over a decade, I moved back to the island in 2019 when I was expecting my second child, returning for the community and for the schools, hoping my children would benefit as I did as a student in the district. Today, I'm the mother of an Island Park third grader, and my youngest will be starting kindergarten in the fall. I want to express my strong support for the upcoming school bond and highlight a critical overdue piece of it: accessibility updates to the high school, crest, and the administration buildings. In 2000, when I was a seventh grader at IMS, I became a paraplegic and full-time wheelchair user overnight. In high school, I had to circumnavigate the building multiple times per day just to reach my classes. This bond will finally create a direct, accessible pathway between buildings, ensuring students with mobility challenges can navigate their high school with dignity and ease. Frankly, it's hard to believe that after twenty years after my high school graduation and thirty-five years after the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, I find myself advocating to bring our district buildings up to code. Furthermore, as with tonight's board meeting, these buildings are community spaces used for public meetings, and as with the power outages last fall, a critical space where in emergencies, all island residents can count on having internet services and charging stations. With this bond, we have the opportunity to ensure that accessibility is built into our schools, rather than requiring the kind of individual accommodations I needed as a student. My family never expected to need ADA access. Few families do. You don't anticipate your child acquiring a physical disability. But whether it's a few weeks on crutches after a sports injury or life-changing accident or illness, every student deserves access to their education. I urge you to support this bond.
Followed, who will be followed by Rubal Dylan. Rubal?
Well, we're all tonight. My name is Daniel Kylie. I'm a school librarian and also the parent of a ninth grader at the high school. I'm here to comment on those cuts to just good librarians. I was raised Catholic in a cultural sense, but chose not to practice Catholicism. Basically, as a kid, I daydreamed my way through Mass at the Mission Church in Santa Clara because I knew that there was a reward of donuts afterwards. The reason I bring this up, my upbringing around the church had a huge influence on my choice to become a teacher, and then a librarian. I see a library as a means of lifting students up to achieve things that they didn't think possible and to open their world to new ideas. I think that my mission in public schools comes from the attitudes. Highly recommend returning to them. Here's what I believe: Schools should be measured by the performance of students who struggle and who don't fit in. They should not be measured by AP test scores, ID league admissions, and so-called rigor. When I arrived three years ago, I immediately felt this mismatch in values with some of the louder voices in the community, so I made the high school library into a place that was inclusive and a refuge for students. I, along with Mary Jo Bill, purchased books by diverse authors, and Jess Schidler and Zach Corbin put up student art on the walls in the library. We added board games and art supplies. I collaborated with teachers on the research assignments, brought in all ninth-grade students for library orientations, and recently began talking to CCR classes about ethically incorporating generative AI into the research and writing. I feel like we have created a space and a program that aligns with all the district's values, vision, mission, and focus fundamentals. If you choose to cut librarian positions, you will engage in textbook-first order thinking. You may solve the problem that is right in front of you, but our students will suffer in the short and long term. How will our students navigate a world where there is literally no online content moderation? Where credible information is dwarfed by misinformation and disinformation? Where book banning has become normalized? And where generative AI supposedly has all the answers? If you cut librarians, next year's freshman class will go to school for seven years without a school librarian. Next year's kindergarten class will attend all thirteen years in the district without a school librarian. On day one of college, our students will be expected to know how to research, elegantly incorporate a wide variety of sources into their writing, and understand citation and plagiarism. I know this because before I worked for the district, I spent fourteen years as an academic librarian. Our students will not be prepared, and they will fall behind. I believe that the proposed cuts to school librarians and instructional coaches will disproportionately affect our students that struggle. These are the themes in our SIP plans year after year after year. Make these students our priority, and we can finally live up to our mission, values, vision, and fundamentals.
Next, Rubal Dylan, who's transcribed. To be followed by Jamie Lynn Dean.
It's Rubal Dylan. Rubal's not here, but she told you to take her place.
Of course.
Can you introduce yourself to us?
Yeah, hi, I'm Martha McGuire. I'm a senior at the high school here. When I first started school, I hated reading. I mean, no, I didn't hate it. I hated how I struggled with reading. I wasn't as fast as the other kids, and I could never pay attention to books long enough. It took me multiple years to actually pick up books voluntarily. That was changed by my high school, by my elementary school librarian. She showed my classmates and I dozens of different books, fairy tales about princesses or nonfiction books about sharks, or books on how to write poetry. She would schedule meet and greets with local authors, allowing us to understand the business of children's books. All of these activities made the Tuesdays that my class went to the library my favorite day of the week. I found my love for reading in comic books first, and my librarian would let me know when she got new copies of Big Nate or Calvin and Hobbes. These librarians are the reason I am an avid reader today, not just comic books. My fear is that the children of our future will not get these opportunities. Without these amazing people pushing our children to understand the library and the books that surround our society, these kids will become cut off from what the library truly stands for: education. I personally formed a close relationship with all of the staff members at Island Park and Northwood Elementary. Some of them I even see in this room, and they will never be able to understand how much they shape my life. But these staff members, the librarians, are also a huge part of that. I feel sorry for the present-day child at Island Park who I was once like, that child who struggles with reading and will not understand the passion of reading because they are being taught about it by someone who is not a librarian, by someone who does not care. It is up to you to make sure that this does not happen. Thank you.
Jamie Lynn Dean, to be followed by Kimberly Nezawa Frank.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Lynn Dean. I'm the mother of two. My son is a junior at MIHS, and I have an eighth grader at IMS. I'm here tonight to express gratitude to all of our Mercer Island School librarians, but I'd especially like to take some time to speak about Mercer Island High School's phenomenal librarian, Daniel Kylie, because I have a personal connection, and to urge the board and administration to maintain his full-time status. I had the privilege of serving on the MIHS PTA for two years, during which time I got to know Mr. Kylie and also came to understand the vital role that he plays at Mercer Island High School. Over the course of my time at MIHS, Daniel eagerly supported various student-led initiatives sponsored by the PTA, going above and beyond by attending events on evenings and weekends, and curating thoughtful resources and literature to support our students' projects. Mr. Kylie organized book clubs for staff and our PTA, and he even used his own resources to create a maker space in the library for kids who just wanted to build things and create. And I think that this just really speaks to Daniel's commitment to ensuring the library is a place not just for students to develop critical research skills and supporting academic excellence, but that it's also a place where every student feels welcome. As you know, high school can be a tough experience for some kids, and having a safe place like the library to go to when you don't feel like you belong, that really means something. Every single student at the high school at some point will see themselves reflected in the thoughtfully curated displays that Daniel creates, and that is intentional. For our kids to know that their voice and their story is important, that matters. I fully acknowledge the difficult budgetary decisions that our administration and school board are facing. I recognize that these cuts are not taken lightly. But I couldn't pass up the opportunity to speak on Mr. Kylie's behalf in hopes that we can find a way to maintain his full-time status. Two years ago, we decided as a school community that the MIHS library was important enough to invest in significantly for our massive renovation. Well, Daniel Kylie is the heart and soul of that library. He's what makes it special, and I firmly believe that maintaining his full-time status is an investment, not just in our kids' academic success, but also in their growth as good human beings. Thank you for listening, and Daniel, thank you for all that you do for us.
Next speaker is Kimberly Nezawa Frank, who will be followed by Tyler Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. Kimberly Nezawa Frank, I'm a parent in the district. I have a class of 2024 graduate and two other students in the high school. I'm here speaking on behalf of Angela Bang, another parent in the high school or in the district who has two children in the district. Angela says, "Dear school board directors and superintendent Brundle, I'm writing to strongly advocate for keeping Daniel Kylie in his position as a full-time certified librarian at Mercer Island High School. Research studies consistently demonstrate the vital role librarians play in student success, improving reading and writing skills, and promoting overall academic achievement. Research also shows with full-time librarians, research also shows schools with full-time librarians experience higher test scores, improved literacy, and stronger critical thinking skills. For example, schools with certified librarians have more students scoring advanced in reading assessments and nearly three times more students reaching advanced writing levels. Most important, these benefits significantly impact the most marginalized of our students, directly supporting our district's public commitment to excellence and engagement for all students. Furthermore, certified librarians foster digital and information literacy, equipping students with skills critical for college and career readiness..." students with skills critical for college and career readiness, which is particularly crucial in this age of AI. Mercer Island High School has been incredibly fortunate to have librarian Dan Kylie collaborating closely with teachers to enrich curriculum and ensure equitable resource access, creating inclusive environments that encourage lifelong learning. As a parent, PTSA leader, and former high school teacher, I was lucky to see firsthand the incredible impact that Danielle has had on our staff and students. Facilitating book clubs for the staff on important issues, providing both a physical, excuse me, physical and emotional safe space in the library, securing valuable grants for supplemental materials, promoting belonging for our most vulnerable students in line with our district vision and values, and helping innumerable MIHS students achieve the greatest potential of their academic excellence. Please ensure that funding for this important certified librarian role in our high school and our district is not given up in this critical time in our students' education. Sincerely, Angela Bang."
Hi, my name is Tyler Stevens, I'm the music teacher at Lake Ridge Elementary. I'm here today because I'm very concerned with the plan to replace our elementary-certified librarian teachers with classified paraeducators as instructors. This decision, I think, actually stands for something a lot bigger than people might realize, and I hope to help you see it from a, a new point of view that goes beyond how many incredible paraeducators we have and how incredibly invaluable our librarians are. I think it's actually going to be crossing our district over a new line with really big systemic implications. So our certified library teachers deliver full class instruction by themselves for up to thirty-five to forty-five minutes. This entails lesson planning, implementation, classroom management, et cetera. This is the kind of work our district gives to certified educators across the board. And the plan for, and the plan, as far as I'm understanding, is for the certified library teacher to be removed, but for library to remain as an instructional block where classroom teachers drop their kids off for thirty-five to forty-five minutes of instruction, but this instruction to be given by paraeducators instead. For context, in elementary, classified paras deliver supporting instruction to small groups of students of five to seven at most, not classes of twenty or more by themselves. So this is really a move that's crossing us into new territory. The workaround is that one certified library teacher will be doing the lesson planning for all four elementary schools, and the classified paras will be delivering the instruction by themselves in the libraries in person to full classes of students. Now, this model poses a concerning and very big question, which is, then why do we need certified teachers in classrooms at all? If a certified teacher can write a lesson plan that someone else implements, potentially someone without teaching credentials, then why do we have certified, and why do we require certified teachers in all of our classrooms from MIIC? If you are accepting this model for change, you are begging the question, why not have classified paras delivering instruction in all of our classrooms with just a handful of certified teachers designing curriculum? Where would this end, right? That's not a model any of us would want, so I don't think it should start here in the library classroom, which is a classroom like all others. So please, we have always entrusted the responsibility of full class instruction to certified teachers, and the modeling, that the model that's being proposed would be questioning the entire foundation of that educational system that we have here. So thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Julie, I'm one of the classified nurses at Lake Ridge. And I've only been part of the team for a couple of years, but I've been a nurse for over eighteen. And I have to say, choosing to enter into school nursing when my son started kindergarten was a huge decision for me. Going from clinical nursing hospital where you're supported by infrastructure, when you have resources available to make decisions as a team, is not how school nursing works. You're making your own assessments based upon your own training and knowledge. I've worked for the past fifteen years at Seattle Children's Hospital. I did my new graduate training as a nurse at Johns Hopkins University Hospital. I do not take it lightly when I say that my nursing license and my practice is a reflection of my patient care. I know the stipulation that nurses get a lot of Band-Aids, especially in elementary school. But I want you to realize that an incident that happened today, that was not escalated because of my patient care, is four minutes I have time to assess an seizure. Four minutes I have to be able to delegate if we're going to call 911, if we're going to administer an emergency medication, or do nothing at all. What does the student more harm in that situation? You have four minutes. Otherwise, I'm working outside of my scope of nursing practice, and that is considered legal ramifications against me and my license. I cannot delegate an assessment to a health room assistant. That is illegal, according to Washington State law. I am a parent of two students, and I started my career here at Mercer Island School District because I wanted to support our school district and support our team. And I am concerned. I understand that there are health room assistants in other districts. I am happy to discuss numbers and staffing and what that potentially looks like, because it is true, we do have budget cuts that need to happen, but not at the student level. Issaquah has twenty-six schools. They have twenty-four nurses and twenty-five health room assistants. That is not one year for elementary students, fourteen, over a thousand students. That is unacceptable. And honestly, it's not worth my nursing license to be held accountable for that. Thank you.
Can I speak from here?
You ask again, the camera will follow you.
Thank you, my name is Gordon McDougall, I'm a, a longtime educator here in the Puget Sound area, just retired a couple of years ago from Ballard High School. I've known and worked with UNEA for almost their entire existence, since, uh, 2008, I believe, I've been working with them in my classroom and tutoring and mentoring, and I joined them on the board. And I have to say that these students, these interns that you heard today, they gain these leadership skills, they gain community, and they gain the ability to advocate, to discuss with each other issues that are important to them and their classmates at the public schools. They've come up with ways to get these ideas to their classmates, and they're hoping that you will accept their resolution number nine to further that goal. They talked long and hard about what is an issue that can really open up Native history here in the Northwest to their, to their classmates, to themselves, and they settled on these boarding schools that were such a tragedy for the community. Their strength allowed them to continue, but there was, as we heard, trauma. That trauma is largely unknown. It's, it behooves us all, as citizens of the wool, to be able to see, to, to know each other, to understand each other, to understand our histories. These first peoples here, the Native tribes all around us, understand this area, they understand each other, they understand us, everyone who's here now, and they want to make sure that everyone knows the heart of, of, of where they come from, what history they experienced, and some of this really, really hard trauma that, that these Indian schools created. Hundreds of thousands of students just ripped out of the arms of their families and their tribes, their haircut, their beating, the language beaten out of them, the only good Indian is a dead Indian, meaning their soul and heart. We heard this, they heard it, they died, they were buried unmarked graves. And this history is very important, that's why the interns focused on this, this issue to try and open that door to the history of the Native peoples here, get people talking, help to develop curriculum. I've helped with curriculum, everyone here has helped with curriculum, and we're, we're ready and standing by to, to help you in your district to try and get these stories out, not try, but to get these stories out and open this door for conversation, for learning, for real history that is known and not buried. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Is Julie here? Nope. Is there Julie Sandler at the hall? No. Okay, she can go ahead if she appears. Rachel Hitchcock to be followed by Sahaj Shah.
Hi, everyone, my name is Rachel Hitchcock, I am a community member, I'm a mom of twins at the high school who served it out as kindergartners at Lake Ridge. I have been a nurse for twenty-two years, the last five at Lake Ridge as a classified nurse. I am here to oppose the replacement of seventy-five percent of our classified nursing staff with your next door neighbor. When programs and processes are being completely offended, one would typically expect that key stakeholders are consulted. This has not been the case in regard to gutting the entire elementary nursing staff. I urge the board to consider these questions that your nurses have not given the opportunity to ask. What exactly is being proposed? Does this proposed model require a significant change to the job description and workload of the one classified nurse that will remain? Does this proposed model require a significant change to the job description and workload of the two certified nurses at IMS and MIHS who already serve the nine hundred plus and fourteen hundred plus respective students at their schools? Is the board aware that a health room assistant must legally function under a nursing license? That nurse must be willing to delegate to a non-clinical health room assistant and put their own nursing license on the line? This delegation cannot be a group effort, as the health room assistant must function under a specific nursing license. Does the board know a nurse cannot delegate assessment? Julie touched on this. A health room assistant cannot assess. This means many students will simply be sent home for management or 911 will be called. Which nurse will be responsible for managing this level of delegation? Will one nurse be responsible for delegating to all of these health room assistants and putting their nurses on the line for three of your next door neighbors? Which nurse, sorry, who will manage the functions at each elementary school that require a nursing license? Assessment of medical conditions and the need for an individualized health plan, the creation of an individualized health plan, hearing and vision screening, referral and follow-up, immunization tracking and compliance, medication management, including injectable medications which require a nursing license, management of students with seizures and diabetes. What does this look like? So we currently have, oh, clock. Are you asking one classified nurse to be a full-time nurse at one school that will now house all the medically needy and medically fragile children who will have to change schools and then oversee all of these health room assistants, while then also traveling to multiple schools? While I appreciate the changes need to be made, I have grave concerns about changing so much so quickly, especially when student health and safety are at stake. I, I just, I want everyone to know that all-
I have a list for three, so I can probably push my time for those.
I really do that. Do you have, if anything you have that you haven't been able to say verbally, you can submit in writing, like, or?
I just think before you consider this riff, you know what you're considering and you know what you're signing up for. There are a lot of nursing functions that nobody thinks about, that nobody realizes. Band-aids and boo-boos are the easy part of our job, and we make all of our jobs seem easy because we were trauma nurses, we were ICU nurses, this is easy to us. Your next door neighbor, it may not be so easy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sahaj Shah, I'm a freshman at the high school and I've been on the island since 2019, roughly six years now. I've had the joy and opportunity to attend Allen Park Elementary, Allarder Middle School, and Mercer Island High School. Through my six years in the district, I've seen how well-designed and modern school facilities foster a strong learning environment, while on the other hand, I've had to sink classrooms that are too cold, or I've had to take a test soaking wet from walking from building to building. Just a few weeks ago, I had to take a trigonometry test. Trig is not my strong suit, but what made it worse having to wear a site so cutaway every problem was having to wear a heavy winter jacket just to keep warm in the classroom. This wasn't me being picky either. I heard and saw many of my peers and even my teacher be bothered by the colder classroom. Students should not have to worry about keeping warm and bringing a thick enough jacket just to be comfortable and to learn. Similarly, in my physics class, at the start of the period, my teacher has to burn five or so minutes just to open windows around the class to keep us from sweating during our labs. This nearly daily occurrence eats away at our learning time as no one can focus, having to put and take off our jacket throughout the period to manage the temperature. The temperature of a classroom should not be a factor in maintaining a strong learning environment. An uncomfortable classroom temperatures can make students uncomfortable, leading to ineffective learning environments. Even in middle school, traversing from class in the new building to a class in one of the old buildings and back is impossible without getting wet, especially in our rainy Seattle weather. While there is some overhead coverage between buildings, one in any kind of a hurry using those overhead paths can be time-consuming, making students choose between being wet or being on time for class. Being wet, especially during a test, is extremely uncomfortable and not suitable for learning or test-taking. By bringing the middle school under one roof, we can solve this issue. The bond measure is needed to foster effective learning environments by maintaining and improving the HVAC systems in the high school and by bringing in the middle school under one. But really, it's about the students, period. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erica Austin, I'm the teacher librarian at Lake Ridge Elementary. I recognize some of my own volunteers. I hesitated to speak tonight because I understand the financial challenges we face, and I've advocated for our library program before many times. However, I feel staying silent may imply support for decision I strongly oppose, oppose of the replacement of certified teacher librarians with paraprofessionals at the elementary level. I recognize the budget crisis, but I question whether this is the best educational choice. A library is not a luxury, it's a vital part of a well-rounded education. Teacher librarians aren't just book managers, we're literacy specialists, research experts, curriculum collaborators, and school leaders. A paraprofessional, however dedicated, simply does not have this training. They play a valuable role in our schools, but they do not, they have not historically led entire classes or provided the specialized instruction that we do. Neighboring districts like Bellevue, Lake Washington, Issaquah, and St. Pauli Valley continue to staff elementary libraries with certified teacher librarians. If we want to stay competitive and provide the best education, we must ensure our students have the same access to these professionals. At Lake Ridge, the library is the heart of the school. Every book I share is chosen to foster critical thinking, spark discussions, and most importantly, inspire a love for reading. Parents often tell me how warm and creative our library space is, and it's where students explore ideas, expand their imaginations, and develop a loving, lifelong love for books. Research shows that strong library programs contribute to higher academic achievement, as many have said before, especially in reading. Our state's academic standards emphasize information literacy, but classroom instruction often focuses more on critical reading than fostering a love of reading. I encourage you to read Catherine Marsh's 2023 Art Atlantic article called Why Kids Aren't Falling in Love with Reading, which explores the decline in children's recreational reading. She argues that the heavy focus on analytical reading skills driven by standardized testing and the Common Core standards have overshadowed storytelling and recreational reading. A strong library program can counteract this decline. This isn't to say that our- This isn't to say that our district's reading instruction isn't excellent. It is. My own kindergartner is thriving because of our program. But the library bridges the gap between developing reading skills and nurturing a passion for books. Mercer Island is, I'm sorry. It's not just the students I support. The librarians also support our classroom teachers by curating books that align with their curriculum and excite students. I help them develop research skills and foster critical thinking. I work with parents too, offering book recommendations and resources to help families during difficult times. Mercer Island is a community of readers. Our students deserve more than a basic book checking out system. They deserve an enriching library experience provided by a certified teacher librarian.
My name is Claudia Gour. I'm a resident Island Park first grader and a future kindergartner. I'm also an author of children's books as well as a children's book publishing professional for the last 13 years. Our country is currently in a reading crisis. Due to the damaging effects of the pandemic and the increasing reliance on screens, kids are struggling with reading more than ever before. In 2024, reading scores on the National Assessment of Education progress were the lowest on record ever. In the book publishing industry, we have seen the effects of this new reality. Kids just can't read long books anymore. They can't finish them. The different genres in children's books have long had word counts, well-established word counts, but now they're all shorter. As a personal example, for my recent young adult nonfiction book, I'd contracted for a book of 40,000 words. When I turned in that manuscript, the publisher immediately asked me to cut 10,000 of those words because of recent feedback they've received from booksellers that they could only sell shorter books. There's also been robust development in the graphic novel space because the visual element seems to help today's young readers. This is not a bad thing, but it's another sign that kids' reading problems are serious if they've trickled down to the business of books. Elementary school librarians are part of the solution to this reading crisis. Their job is to help kids develop a love for reading. By being there consistently and knowing their students, they cater their library time and reading choices to the interests, needs and lessons of each class. Librarians help reluctant readers finally find those special books that captivate them and they help those kids who come back every single day looking for a new book to find new stories that feed their love of reading. Our librarians physically stock the shelves with books they think their kids will love, create programs and even invite authors to help expose our students to the magic books, get them excited about readings. Our librarians serve every single student in the school. Cutting them has a direct impact on every single student in our school system. We are Mercer Islands. We need to be part of the solution to help drive our students out of this crisis, to help avoid them being a part of it. The idea that we are diminishing the library program at such a moment makes no sense to me. It's a profound disservice to our students. We need to be doing more to help develop the reading skills, not less. We are also in a time when libraries are under attack like never before with funding being pulled at the national level and censorship running rampant. Librarians act as protectors of knowledge and they're also critical in combating the crisis libraries are currently facing. Again, the idea that we are diminishing the library program at such a moment makes no sense to me. None of us are in an enviable position. I know making decisions about cuts is very hard and very tough choices have to be made. I ask that you reconsider pulling the librarians and find another place to cut that does not affect every single student so directly at such a critical time when our students need these educators and loves. Thank you.
Good evening. Happy birthday. Sorry, such a long night for you. My name is Christine Kenyon. I'm a career college specialist at the high school, but my training is in special education. And I'm here tonight to speak on the subject of reduction in staffing for the classified nurse position for next school year. I taught medically fragile students in the district since 2008 and I now work in the counseling office, which is right near the nurses' office at the high school. My understanding is this cut will impact the students and staff I work with in the following ways. Safety of students and staff. During my tenure in Mercer Island School District, I witnessed students having grand mal seizures, falling from unsafe heights, having anaphylactic reactions and suffering from diabetic incidents. Having a licensed medical professional on campus was critical and the positive outcome, outcome of all of these situations. Most of the time, the person on hand was my friend Shelley, the school nurse at Mercer Island High School and formerly at Island Park. Her experience, knowledge and skills are impossible, impossible to replicate in a health assistant position and I would imagine it would be same at the other schools. While I realize Shelley's position will not be reduced, she's going to be pulled in multiple directions, including off of our campus. This week, Shelley was off campus for two and a half days and during that time, we had a number of acute medical needs, including a 911 call. Fortunately, we had a licensed substitute nurse on site to handle the situation along with staff. I'm not going to say what happened, but I am going to say that the student was advocating for something that she wanted to take that would have not helped her in this situation. And somebody who doesn't know would have probably let her do that. Current staff impact. The paperwork on this reduction indicates that some nurse assistants may be hired to replace the classified positions. Are these licensed professionals or is that something that's going to be rolled into an existing office staff member's position? I can only speak for the high school to say that our counseling staff is more than happy to help in time of need. In fact, we were all involved in a 911 call. But on a daily basis, it's hard to imagine how we would manage the job that Shelley does in her absence. We're not licensed medical professionals and are concerned about what would be expected of us in Shelley's absence while tending to other school buildings needs. Training. We have medically fragile students on our campus and teachers require training and sometimes nurse designation to support them in caring for students. This is a big part of Shelley's job. I know because she did it with me along with supporting the SST student support teams and the 504 IEP teams. I'm trying to picture how she can be effective in this area if she's traveling to other buildings due to reductions. So the effect of unrepaired and possibly unsupported staff and students is not one I wish to see in our building or in our district. So please reconsider this reduction. Thank you. Tidagui, okay, I was calling. Thank you.
Good evening. I asked Rachel if she wanted to have one time. She said, no, thank you. But thank you for letting me have my moment, my outburst. Good evening, members of the school board and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jessica Olson and this is my eighth year teaching second grade at Lakewood Elementary School. And I'm here to address the proposed reduction force impacting our classified nursing staff. While the savings may seem significant in the short term, cutting these positions will have long-lasting consequences on the health and wellbeing of our students. Our nurses aren't just providing basic care. They are the essentials to the health of our students with serious medical needs. Students with type 1 diabetes rely on school nurses to manage insulin and blood glucose levels, ensuring their safety throughout the day. Similarly, students beginning treatments with conditions like ADHD depend on nurses to administer medication and monitor their health. These are specialized tasks that require trained professionals and without them, we risk both the health of our, we risk the health of our students. I've spoken with our nurses at Lakewood Elementary, both who are here tonight, and both have expressed their deep commitment to the welfare of our students, particularly those with medical needs. Their work is vital and without them, we would be failing to support some of our most vulnerable students. I urge you to reconsider these cuts. Look elsewhere for ways to manage our budget. Our school nurses are an essential nursing part for ensuring the safety, health and emotional wellbeing of our students. And if we truly care about the whole child, we must continue to invest in the professionals who make that possible.
Followed by Joan Wold.
Hi, my name is Chloe Tidagui and I'm a seventh grader at Islander Middle School. And my mother, Crystal Tidagui, is the current librarian at Island Park Elementary School. I know what I say today might not make a difference, but I hope my voice is heard anyway. I have been told many, many times by my elementary librarians that our voices matter, even if we are small. I hope that is true as I speak to you today. Our libraries are important. They promote reading, teach important skills and enrich our learning. But you might not realize how important they are for many of us kids to feel safe in a political world that's constantly confusing us and scaring us. The library is one of the safest spaces we have. We are allowed to learn and question, respect and understand different perspectives. I have learned through books and stories of other kids just like me around the world that have had to stand up for what is right. Dr. Rundle told the community that he wants to model the elementary schools to follow the same model as the middle school. That's misleading and confusing. I want you to know as a seventh grader, I have only been to our library three times this year. We don't want, we don't have a certified librarian. Is that really what we want for our elementary students? Or to not have a real librarian? I loved going to the library every week in elementary school. There are better choices that you need to make. Stop taking away our safe spaces. Keep our librarians. We need them. We deserve better. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joan Wold and I've been a Nurse Island resident for most of my life. I attended elementary through high school here. I raised three kids on the island. I continue to live and work as a first grade teacher at Lakewood Elementary School on Mercer Island. I'm motivated to speak today. I love reading. I love books. I learned to love books in the library of my elementary school, Mercer Crest Elementary, which is now the Crest Learning Center. But I don't love books simply because there was a room full of them at my school. I love books today because of the talented librarian who was a teacher and constant presence during my elementary years. She not only taught me how to find books I would enjoy, but also fostered a deep love of reading, one that can even be called a little bit nerdy maybe. Now, as a teacher at Lakewood, I work to instill that same love of reading in my students. And do you know who helps me do that on a weekly basis? Erica Odison. She helps me to read to my students and make topics more relatable and exciting. She helps them to find books they love or to do research on topics such as Women's History Month or when they have their animal research project. Librarians do more than buy and check out books. They get to know every student in the school, support them emotionally, as we've heard from so many tonight. And it's still a lifelong love and appreciation for reading, which I have to this day. You can say they are the heart of a school and they are the heart of our schools. Thank you for listening and please reconsider your decision.
She's coming in online. Oh, she's coming in online. Okay, great. Who will be followed by Lauren Evans?
Am I up? Okay, hi, everyone. Thank you. Sorry, I'm at a work event, but this is such a priority for me that I had to call in. I'm Stacy Ulycia. I'm a parent of two children at Lakewood. My daughter has type 1 diabetes, a condition that requires constant monitoring, quick decisions and at times, critical nursing intervention. The school nurse for us is not a luxury. She's a lifeline. When my daughter's blood sugar drops low or her blood sugars spike unexpectedly, it's the nurses who know what to do, who act quickly, who communicate with me and who give me peace of mind that my daughter is safe during the school day. But the school nurses don't just support children with chronic conditions. You know, they're there for every student, from fevers and concussions to mental health concerns and emergencies. Our nurses provide expert care, comfort and stability for all kids. And I am certain that our students will not receive the same level of care with health room assistants. Cutting these nurses from the budget is a dangerous choice and I strongly urge you to reconsider this decision and prioritize the health and safety of our children by funding these school nurses. They are without question essential. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Evans, to be followed by Lisa Rivera.
Hello, my name is Ren Evans. I'm a senior at Mercer Island High School and I'm here today to advocate for our district's amazing library staff. I deeply respect your mission statement, how it prioritizes students first. But I personally feel that cutting our school's librarians is anything but that. I know that I can comment on the importance librarians in our district as someone that checks out books from our high school library almost every week. Our librarian, Mr. Keely, has been an incredible resource for me, not only checking out books or ordering them for me, but helping me research for academic clubs, guiding me through complex projects and introducing me to literary heights that I would not have been able to reach on my own. However, as you are aware, it's not just me and my fellow high school students who need our librarians. I urge the school board to consider our youngest learners in elementary school. Those librarians are often the first to spark a child's love of reading. I know they work for me and it was that influence that's pushing me to pursue a career in elementary education. They create safe spaces where curiosity is celebrated and help every child in our school system learn more about their interests and discover their personal identity. By cutting these positions, we're not only taking away these amazing staff's jobs, but also potentially extinguishing a child's first passion for learning and discovery. Librarians do not only shelf books or watch over kids, they're literary advocates, research guides, technology mentors, and often the most supportive adults in a school building when it comes to true learning and self-discovery. They've helped me and so many other students feel appreciated and supported in their learning. Your students' first motto rings hollow if you remove the professionals who support students' intellectual growth. Our schools, districts' librarians are fundamentals to students' intellectual and personal growth and removing them would be a contradiction to your promise to Mercer Island students. I would also urge you to acknowledge how united students are on this issue. We're not just asking you to save jobs. I know budget cuts are difficult, but we are asking you to invest in our potential, our curiosity and our future. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Rivera. I am a direct descendant of the Kamachi Intahamana Tribes. I'm a board member of UNEA and I'm also a former Seattle School Board Director. So thank you for hearing us tonight. I'm reviewing a statement on behalf of Jed Marley. He is the Executive Director of Yellowwood Academy. I'm writing to personally express my wholehearted support for the 2025 resolution calling for the integration of Indian boarding school education and recognition of Every Child Matters Day in all K-12 schools across Washington State. As Executive Director of Yellowwood Academy, I've had the privilege of witnessing UNEA's steadfast leadership and the strength of native youth in action. Our school has long valued the relationship we've built with UNEA and I've been continually inspired by the power, purpose and heart that defines their advocacy. The legacy of Indian boarding schools is one of deep pain and ongoing impact and a truth that must be acknowledged and addressed through education, remembrance and healing. I strongly support the call for curriculum that centers the lived experiences of boarding school survivors and Native knowledge keepers. And I stand with UNEA urging all schools to recognize September 30th as Every Child Matters Day. This resolution is vital, not just for native youth, but for all of us who believe in truth, justice and the transformative world of education. I'm honored to support this effort and grateful for your leadership. With deep respect and solidarity, Jed Marley. Thank you.
The next speaker after Rico will be Josh Gable.
Hi, I'm Rico Pole and I have a 2020 grad and a 2024 grad. And I'm here to talk about the bond, but first I want to say I am so impressed with the librarians and the people that are talking about the nurses. I can't imagine as a former teacher not having a nurse in my building and a certified librarian. It's the utmost important for our community and our class students. So I'm thrilled to hear everything that everybody's been saying about you all tonight. It's been wonderful. I'm here to voice my strong support for the proposed school bond measure. This bond is not just an investment in our schools, it's an investment in the safety and education and the future of our entire community. First and foremost, our middle school needs to be completed. This bond is meant to finish what we started and with the last bond. And getting our students under one roof will improve safety. Students deserve to learn in an environment where their wellbeing is prioritized and parents deserve peace of mind, knowing that our schools meet modern safety standards. At the high school, this bond will provide critical upgrades, including much-needed HVAC systems. Our students and teachers should not have to endure extreme temperatures while trying to learn and teach. If the HVAC system fails and we cannot use the building, we'll be in a crisis situation. Additionally, the updated sprinkler systems are not just about maintaining our facilities. They are essentials for emergency preparedness. These buildings are supposed to be safe havens in the event of a disaster, not just for students, but for our entire community. Beyond the safety, this bond also supports critical academic and extracurricular programs. Robotics is a rapidly growing field and our students should have the opportunity to develop- and our students should have the opportunity to develop skills in a proper educational setting, not in the back of the South End Rite Aid. We owe it to them to provide the adequate space and the resources for STEM education. Our nationally recognized radio program is another point of pride for Mercer Island. This program provides students with hands-on experience in broadcasting and media, and it deserves the updates necessary to maintain its reputation and success. I also want to take a moment to recognize and thank Samantha Rubenfeld and Megan Banta. These two incredible volunteers have poured their hearts and souls into advocating for this bond because they understand the importance. Their dedication to our students and our community is inspiring, and I appreciate their tireless efforts. This bond measure is not about luxury, it's about necessity. It's about ensuring that our schools remain safe, functional, competitive, and preparing our students for the future. I urge the board and our community, most importantly, our community, to support this bond and invest in the well-being of our students and our city.
To all the people who are here, to the people who are here, Josh Gable teaches to the quality of church. My name is Josh Gable. I'm proud to serve on the Soqombe Tribal Council. I'm also a resident of Mercer Island. I thank you all for your time today. I thank you all for your time today. There's a lot going on. I'm so proud of the young people that spoke earlier, that spoke with their heart, their hutch, about breaking generational trauma and then in cycles that we all carry with us as native people. I think about my grandparents' generation and their parents and their parents and their parents. And they all faced the atrocities of the boarding schools. When children were taken from their homes, their Indian names were removed, their traditional attire was removed. The assimilated practice was to kill the Indian to save the man. And what I've seen in my lifetime is a lot of progress. My dad and his siblings, when they went to school in the Soqombe Valley, they were picked on and browned, and they fought every day against the people, their classmates that were picking on them as a result of those assimilated practices and those racist policies. I was blessed to go to the Valley School District, and I was one of two native students in my school. And I recall the education, the curriculum at that time. The only thing I remember is Lewis and Clark Expedition. And so we've come a long way. I know that Mercer Island has implemented its time memorial, and I encourage you all to continue working with tribes in Soqombe to ensure that our story is told. But the UNEA Resolution on Boarding Schools in all schools is critical because the students say that I see the native kids, it's the first time they've been able to be proud about being native since before colonization. They are learning our language. They are carrying on genology of their ancestors without shame, without being beaten or worse. In order for us to continue that work, in order for that to go forward, we have to know where we came from. That's why the boarding school education is so important. And that Every Child Matters goes along with that because it's a day of recognition. When you have awareness, you can then have change. I know that budget time and there's a whole lot going on here in the state and federally, it's hard to think about new things because you're so focused on what can we keep. But by working together with tribes, with organizations like UNEA, this is not a heavy lift. This is just assuring that the first peoples of this country, of this land, our time is given once again, and that we don't repeat the mistakes from the past. So I thank you for your time. I appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Matthew Moltier, to be followed by Elizabeth Cora. Oh, it says Lauren Evans, though. It's really Mark Moltier. Go get changed. Welcome, Mark.
Hi, I'm giving my time up for UNEA to sing a song for you guys, if that's okay.
Okay, the song is "Talk to Us" by Matthew Warbonnet, and it's Warbonnet's song.
Cola dokele, colo dokele. Cola dokele, colo dokele. Cola cheyapelohe, waziatakecheoke. Cola dokele, colo cheyapelohe. Cola dokele, colo dokele. Cola dokele, colo dokele. Cola cheyapelohe, waziatakecheoke. Cola dokele, colo cheyapelohe. Cola dokele, colo dokele. Cola dokele, colo dokele. Cola cheyapelohe, waziatakecheoke. Cola dokele, colo cheyapelohe. Cola dokele, colo dokele. Cola dokele, colo dokele. Cola cheyapelohe, waziatakecheoke. Cola dokele, colo cheyapelohe.
Our next speaker is Liz Grove, to be followed by, and I'm totally going English, Wakas Ajayi.
Hi, I'm a senior at Mercer Island High School, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Rat and everyone else. And so what I want to start with is my experience that I've had at school. I've been at school in the district since kindergarten, and I've been taught a shockingly little amount about Native Americans and their struggles. The only courses where I've actually learned about Native history is AP US History and then Washington State History in 7th grade, which didn't do a super accurate and complete job of teaching about the history. Even though we go through the process of land acknowledgements and the announcements at the high school, I don't see that effort corresponding in the curriculum at the high school. More than just saying the quote-unquote right things, we need to take action within the curriculum to teach our students about the importance of history. By not teaching right, we're perpetuating misinformation, lack of understanding, and doing a disservice to both our students and the Native community. I'm also here speaking on behalf of Student Voices for Change. And I have a statement from Student Voices for Change. Student Voices for Change is a club at Mercer Island High School that works on amplifying students' voices and ensuring all students feel they have a place in our community. We endorse the pathing of this resolution, and we hope that the school board agrees with this decision. This resolution accurately reflects the fact that the legacy of federal Indian boarding schools continue to impact Native American communities today. Addressing the experiences of Native Americans in these boarding schools is not only to examine historical accuracy, but also to promote social justice and honor the trauma of survivors and their descendants. There is a significant lack of awareness on this issue in schools across the United States, and this perpetuates misunderstandings about the true horrific nature of Native American boarding schools. In many schools, the history of Native Americans is often just a brief overview, typically focusing on colonization and nothing further. This blatantly stretches over the boarding school era, which often leaves students with an incomplete and distorted understanding, failing to acknowledge the systemic injustices that have been inflicted upon Native Americans. The systemic inequalities that led to underfunded Native schools, limited access to healthcare and health disparities, higher poverty rates, lack of legal representation, loss of language and culture, and so much more. As a school district, we have an obligation to discuss the past wrongs and work on repairing the harm they caused. It's important to our future generations that they understand the history of Native Americans and America and boarding schools, to not only educate, but also support the continued revitalization of Native cultures, languages, and traditions. By incorporating the history into the curriculum through new resources, our school district will be able to empower students, hopefully in and around our district, to become more informed and committed to honoring the experiences of natives. Mercer Island School District that is pledged to remembering the past, respecting survivors, and creating a future where all children feel like they belong in the district. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Wakas Ajayi. My apologies, please tell me how to correct it.
You're way close. Hi, everyone, especially folks sitting on this side. I usually watch the outcome of these meetings unfold on Nextdoor, so it's fascinating watching them on that. Being a parent of two boys that go to this school district, I can't thank you enough to face all the questions that come your way and all the feedback that come your way. I wasn't planning to be here at this podium tonight, but I was inspired by everybody that talked before me, and I thought there's something that I can add to that conversation. We moved to this island seven years ago, and I was forced by my beautiful wife standing there to move here, primarily because of the school district. We were living in Seattle, and we wanted to move somewhere where our kids could have an environment where they can prosper. And I'm really happy to say we have found that on Mercer Island. Just to make it a little more concrete, over that time, I have made two career decisions. I currently am the CFO of a technology company, and one of the final things that I was negotiating with them was to remain remote while heading finance teams in New York. And in that calculus, was the decision to stay here was driven by how well could we feel about the Mercer Island School District? So thank you for that. Fred, I also realized I have sat on that side of that table multiple times in my career. When the note came out about RIFs, I had to explain to a couple of people that we are friends with, what does RIF stand for? Directional Force, by the way, people have recalled. It's never easy. It's a math problem, and you have to solve it, so there are no easy decisions. The one thing I did find interesting, just waiting outside here, is as you think about these trade-offs, you have an impossible decision with 83% of your budget locked in people cost across salaries and benefits. So those trade-offs have to be made unless you can solve that problem. But what I found surprising in all of this was that all of the folks impacted, all of the roles impacted, were student-facing roles. I've gone through this exercise multiple times in my career. And the last thing we cut are salespeople, our developers. So it was interesting. So whenever we come out with this final plan, I would love to understand how those trade-offs were made. But thank you so much for hearing me out today, and I hope you guys have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Sorry?
Can you correct me on how to pronounce your name?
Wakas.
Wakas, okay.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker. Thank you all very much. We have heard a lot tonight. As our last recent speaker mentioned, there's been a lot going on. We are going to take a 10-minute recess right now, and then we are going to pick up with our regular agenda. Just as we were just chatting before the speakers got started, and Fred is proposing to fold the two financial report items into our board report that we get this week, that he and Matt will do like a video presentation and put it in our board report so that we can get right to discussing the rest of this.
You can send any questions back when we interview. We'll come back in a minute.
Yeah, because as it is, we may have priorities. Also, thank you to everyone who like yielded time with other time. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that I have my feet up not because I'm lazy or disrespectful. Not because I'm lazy or disrespectful, but because I recovered from abdominal surgery a month ago. So, this has been a lot of time sitting up straight for me, so feet up. Okay. That said, we are we are doing something else with our financial reports this week. They're going to be presented to us in the board report. So, as a result, we are moving on to the we are moving on to the nine report on budget reductions for 2025 coming next.
Great. You know, like you, I appreciate all the people coming out with a lot of passion and energy about very important parts of our school district. Our portion now is to talk about kind of where we are in the process and some reminders of where we've where we've traveled and where we're headed and why we are facing the challenges that we are. And so, we're going to do this presentation first. Aaron and Aaron will help out with portions of it, as will Andrew Reeves to kind of give some context. And then we'll go into the next item, which is just the first reading of the RIF resolution. So, I'm going to share my screen here. I might even make any sort of luck. There we go. So, just a reminder of kind of where we are. You know, that that number around, you know, it's over three million dollars that we believe we'll have to close in terms of our budget. And as we've stated before and in the roadshow and the budget roadshow that we've done, we've really focused on three main strategies. The first strategy is hopefully some legislative action, and I have a small report on that, as I'm sure that Directors Martinez and Lee will as well. Three main areas of our deficit. Transportation does not have anything left in the House or the Senate. And so, there's no relief coming out of those two, and we'll talk a little bit about the others. The next leg of the stool to try to overcome deficit is raising student fees, and we'll talk a little bit more in-depth about that tonight. And then lastly, the staffing reductions. And as the last speaker had mentioned, there's eighty-three percent of the budget. But we also have other reductions that we've been making that will highlight along the way. Kind of what's new in Olympia, I think we're on the seventy-fourth day of the session, and so, we're kind of coming down towards the end. I think that there's a current fight going on between both sides of the House, the Governor's Office, about how much the deficit really is. The Office of Program Research, which is kind of the bipartisan group, if you will, they had come out with an original forecast of about six point seven billion dollars. Again, this is on the four-year forecast. This isn't per year. They adjusted it after the revenue report came out to eight point seven billion. It's still less than where we started when we heard from legislators that it was twelve billion or so it's lower than both than all three that I'm hearing. Krista, as you nodding, that's what you're hearing as well. The Senate, they're the side of the House that actually is continuing to keep K-12 as an option and a priority. We have Senate Bill fifty-two sixty-three for special ed, Senate Bill fifty-one ninety-two for MSOC. And then on the House side, there's really nothing left being supported on the House. The House has said that without any new revenue, they're not interested in funding anything new in education. Obviously, that would need to be in the form of things like taxes. And then on the levy lid side, even though those were didn't necessarily make it out of committee, they do believe that those will come back up as necessary to resolve the budget. And so, there's Senate Bill fifty-five ninety-three, that's Senator Lomans. That would be a return to McCleary. And then House Bill thirteen fifty-six, which would also have an increase in levy lid and LEA. But that one's also tied to a property tax increase as well for education in general. I point all of these out because it is important, and I hope that those who are as passionate tonight and those who are as passionate in the community continue to push for changes down in Olympia. That is our best chance to continue to close some of these gaps. We have a little bit of a, and this happens every year, we have a calendar issue. And the calendar issue is when we know some of these things that will come out of the legislature is after we need to have already made a lot of decisions at this table and throughout our district. And I really extend my appreciation to our principals and our staff who have had to already start having a lot of these conversations and heard about the ramifications of those tonight. But it is about transparency and being open and honest early. The last thing we want to do is wait a long time and hide the ball, and then people don't have time to hear and understand. So, it is not easy. It creates a lot of tension in the system. We've been in situations where the legislature then comes in. The year of McCleary, I had to cut an administrator. And then we ended up giving double-digit raises at the bargaining table after we had just cut a number of positions. It happens because things are backwards in the system. So, it is a timing challenge that we move through, but we'll continue to work through it. As a reminder, kind of the phases of my superintendency a little bit. You know, we were coming out of COVID, and we were kind of the first to really hit the impact of reductions in our fund balance, rising costs. And we were kind of the lone district out there warning everyone else of where the state is headed. Our circumstances just made us on the front end of that. We restored and brought, I think, hope and confidence as we repaid a debt to ourselves. We continued to start to grow fund balance. And then this year has really been about, we've got to make some fundamental changes because we're out of trips. And those fundamental challenges are the challenges ahead of us. And if I predict for next year, it's going to be a lot of trying to stay the course. You know, with the limited support I'm seeing out of Olympia, I think that could be a continued challenge. Contextually going on around us right now, there's six districts in the state of Washington in binding condition. We have a number who are taking out inter-fund loans, apportionment advances. We've got neighboring districts that we're aware of who are reducing staffing. And you know, their fund balances may have been in a different place than ours. But we have several who are going to be heading towards that dangerously close position that we were in with binding condition a few years ago. So, you know, I think you as a board, I think our school district should continue to feel positive around the growth that we have seen. And while it's been incremental in our fund balance growth, we have been able to continue to grow that, which we can continue to do again this year. On the state side, there's some slides in here. I won't spend a lot of time on these. They're more of a reminder for the public than you. You've seen these a lot. These are some new slides out from OSPI around what districts have been facing. And so, whereas our insurance costs have even been greater, on average, we can see what costs have been doing since 2019, 2020. Again, another graph that you've seen and that you're aware of, but for the community, realizing where we were for an investment in public ed in the seventeen nineteen biennium compared to the twenty-three twenty-five biennium, certainly contributing to the challenges that we face as a school district. Another way to look at that, taking a look at percentage of gross state product compared to other states. And then the other one, and this has now been updated to really give another sense of, you know, why our dollars aren't going as far as they once were. And while we're putting more money into education relative to inflation, that has not continued to keep up. As a reminder for our community and us, you know, what have we continued to do? You know, we've got to make accurate and conservative student enrollment projections. We cannot afford to miss on that. We can't afford to miss on staffing. We're not in a situation, I'll share some other numbers here in a moment, with respect to our monthly costs versus our fund balance. We have to be making reductions at our MSOC. We've got to be committed to efficiency. We've limited travel, partnering with our partners with MIEA, and then all of the work around strategic budgeting. A reminder around just the implications of the levy swap and kind of where we are there. Obviously, the great hope was that the levy swap was going to yield public ed being funded by the state and not as much reliance on local levies. Unfortunately, as those previous slides showed, we just haven't seen that same funding from the state. And then when we're capped on our levy side, that cap year over year with inflation going up has caught up to us. Just in historical numbers as a reminder, if we would have taken what we were collecting in our EPNO levy and escalate that to the last school year, you know, there's a delta of about five point eight million that we're looking at in terms of lost purchasing or buying power and putting in investments into our schools. And then as we start to look at next year, this is why we are where we are, looking at a three-million-dollar deficit. The IPD, you know, one percent increase for our staff is one point seven million dollars that we have to budget for. Our IPD revenue from the state, it's pretty much now, we believe, locked in at two point five percent. That's a seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of revenue. And obviously, then the one point seven and the seven hundred twenty-five thousand, there's that delta because the state's only picking up two-thirds of the costs for staff. And that, so that IPD spread only spreads so far. We also have a very tenured staff. We have very experienced staff who comes with lots of great expertise, and that's a great problem to have. But without that experience factor that the state used to fund, we know just to open up our doors next year because of stepping column and longevity and years for a classified staff of about five hundred thousand dollars that we have to budget for. We realized the unfortunate news this week.
Quick question on the experience factor. Is the state still funding that? Is it just we no longer qualify? And did we sort of miss out on?
We, so we didn't, we no longer qualified when they last adjusted it four years ago. The next adjustment might, is what I'm being told, is another year away. And we might qualify at that point, but there were very few districts that qualified. And for whatever reason, our metrics just didn't match up when they last did the the analysis district by district. So, there is a potential that we could see support if it continues to get funded by the legislature.
So, we'd be having, so what's the five hundred thousand since we haven't been receiving it historically?
We, since we, where do we get it from?
Well, my understanding is we haven't qualified the last four years, correct?
But our, but our contract still, we still have to provide that, you know, contract of longevity and stepping column.
So, contractually, like we've made a promise, but we don't get the revenue?
Correct, exactly. On the benefit side, unfortunately, we received the news this week that we need to be, we'll probably be underfunded four hundred eighty thousand dollars due to increases in the benefits costs. Again, said was supposed to be a great thing for the individual staff member as well as districts. And that continues to be underfunded compared to what the rate increases are. And so, there's another amount of money. And then I think I shared with you before on the insurance side, our insurance has told us that we will go up another fourteen point two percent or about a hundred seventy thousand next year. Some considerations, you know, three point six million dollars, that's the amount of money we need to, you know, achieve if we want a four point five percent fund balance at the end of the year. If we want five percent, we need more, you know, and it goes up. Remember, and I use that just as a reminder that our monthly payroll costs are about five and a half million right now. And the state continues to underfund our teacher salaries to the tune of about twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars for the average teacher compared to what the state will generate versus what we believe our teacher or what we've agreed to in our contracts. I think there's some competing interests and priorities that we have to acknowledge that when we make our decisions, we have to then think about how we're going to overcome them on the other side. One is certainly our four neighborhood elementary schools that we've committed to. There is an eight hundred thousand dollar operational cost of that that we have to make sure we account for. We have wanted to continue with the seven-period day. I know that there's a school district here in the Puget Sound region who went to a six-period day, and that will start next year. I know of another school district, they're going from an eight-period to a six-period. That's not been a That's not been a priority for our school district. We've wanted to keep a seven-period day. I would continue to advocate for that as well. We have lots of extracurriculars and athletic opportunities because of the whole child commitment and the opportunities for our students. We've continued to have a 512 performing arts continuum rather than a 612 or even as other districts are starting to move to even 7 or 812. We wanted to continue to have competitive salaries and benefits. If we want smaller class sizes, and then we also have enrollment caps for our classes and a wide spectrum of courses and choices, we just can't have everything. There are competing and dynamic interests at play. So as we think about the future and as we're looking at next year, we have to think about, you know, where can we set class sizes to still make sure that we are covering our costs and maintaining positions? How are we going to account for rising inflation? And then that diminishing cap on our funding on the EPNO levy continues to be a challenge. So that kind of sets the stage. I'm going to kick it over to our HR team to talk a little bit about the staffing and reductions, where we are, how we kind of got there, and some thinking along the way.
Yeah, and the public sector sort of stole my thunder a little bit in that the reason why we end up with staffing so often in the public sector, and really even in the private sector, but in schools, is that 83% of our budget is people. So there's only so much trimming you can do in printers, papers, contracts, et cetera, in order to fill a $3.3 million hole. When we're doing that, we do try to weigh the varied interests of preserving student services and programs and opportunities both in and outside of the classroom while simultaneously safeguarding district financial health and sustainability. That means trying to strengthen our fund balances, but in a staid way in terms of growing it, but in a way that's not so aggressive that it makes cuts unbearable or unsustainable within the district. Having conservative projections, because I think it's superintendent mentioned, if we miss on our enrollment projections, that can completely upend our budget and we just can't afford to do that. We have had that happen in the past, and the economic result was less than positive. And we want to continue to be independent. We do not want to be one of the districts in binding conditions because when that happens, they come in and they cut who they want. We have no voice, so they think we need a six-period day, that's what we get whether we want it or not. And that is not something we want to happen in our district. So we want some agency there. So we want to make sure that we stay on the bright side of the fiscal line, so we want to stay in the black. And then we also need to be transparent, we navigate the competing interests and make sure we adhere to the law. That's sort of how we navigate this. So we do get to reductions, which again, we try to do everything before we get to reductions. We start with renewal of non-continued contracts and letters. So we don't bring back staff who do not have an ongoing right under our contracts to employment. So we look at that. Then we look at position adjustments and reassignment. So if we have an opening, rather than filling it with someone from outside, we'll shift someone who has a right to ongoing contracts into that if they are appropriately endorsing their secondary or if they're certificated, if they're classified, maybe they have different skill sets, and we can, they can step into a different role or be trained to do a different role. Another option is to not backfill leave-based vacancies. So if a staff member is out for a year because of some medical leave or child rearing, we could simply not hire someone to fill their shoes so that something is not a rip because no one is being displaced from a job to which they have a right. Now, that means that sort of kicks the cap down the road a little bit because if they come back the next year and we don't have a position, then we might be riffing again, which is a little bit of what you've seen because we've been doing this over the last couple of years. And finally, there's a reduction of force. And reduction of force is an adverse employment action. We're eliminating the position or part of a position, it may not be the whole position held by a staff member with contractual rights to continue employment. And there's no other suitable place to move them. Now, for, as I said before, we look to reduce all other costs first, and sometimes what you've heard today, we were discussing librarians, and you'll hear that later, as well, the certificated librarians. Many of them have, those people had alternative endorsements, so they will be absorbed into our system, most of them, into our system. But that may displace someone else, and that is the whole concept of bumping, which I know I presented to the board before, but for those who are at home and maybe weren't paying attention the last time we had this discussion. It moves people from the job they're in to another, and the person who is ultimately the lowest because it's in personory is the person who is displaced if there's no capacity in the system to just absorb them. But we try to absorb as many people as we have because we're legally obligated to do so. The impact of bumping is still an impact. I don't want to minimize that. People go into a profession to be a librarian. I've been into a profession to be an attorney. And if I suddenly had to, I don't know, be a welder, that would be a problem. I didn't want to ride anything that I weld or use any tool that I was welding, but it would also not necessarily fill my bucket. So I do think we need to be sensitive that there's impacts throughout this. And that's really what this process is. We're in a situation where we have to balance interests, we have to make reductions, and there will be an impact. What you heard today from public speakers is that there's an impact to these changes. Our job in to try to figure out what's of these interests, where's the best impact? And Aaron Miller here and Andrew is will talk about some of the reductions that we made and why we made them, and sort of thought process behind. But we are trying to listen to those who are in the building before we come to you and find out what would be the least impactful, given the amount of cuts that we have to do, which is not insignificant. Next slide.
Sort of the reduction in budget process, just to walk you through. We start with projected enrollment because really student enrollment thrives everything we do. And then we look at ongoing, anticipated ongoing unit expenditures. And we sort of basically calculate the delta between what we're going to get in, which is driven by student enrollment, and what we're going to be putting out. And that creates, that identifies the hole, the deficit we need to fill. Then we build a staff model, and then we include proposed reductions. So we need a staff model that's $3.3 million less, and from that, we can maybe take out less than $3.3 million if we can find reductions elsewhere. We then look at, we review programs and potential changes for contractions. So can we offer a little bit less? Do we need C teams? I know that was a discussion that came out even at Booster Cups, but I was asked, and was like, well, do we need C teams in sports? So there's lots of discussions. You also look at where do we get revenues? Can we increase fees for some of these things where instead of cutting fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade arts offerings, can we increase the fees so that we can retain them? So we try to balance those interests as well. And then we determine ultimately what's the need for reduction force. And that's where we're offsetting, we're using staff to fill our deficit. We do that based on seniority, so we develop that, and that's contractually required, which is distributed to staff so they confirm and review it to make sure that they're placed appropriately. And then we try to identify reduction that align with our fiscal needs and student needs as best we can. And then we, at the end of the day, when we have to do reductions, we try to implement with compassion and care, knowing that this has a real impact is one of the reasons why we have the conversations early, probably earlier than other districts do. Well, I know it's earlier than other districts do, and that is because we want to give our staff the best opportunity to find employment elsewhere because they are being reduced and we're losing them for no reason of their own, like they didn't cause this reduction. So roles of district leaders throughout this is not something that Aaron and I in HR do in isolation. It starts out with ongoing HR and finance collaboration with the schools and various departments. This really started back in November when we're thinking we're going to have reductions. So we're just saying, be thinking about where you might be able to cut. What do you not need to backfill? We started every position that became available, even at that time, we considered, do we need to repost this position and backfill? Then we also focus on our enrollment projections and staffing plans and sort of what the reduction expectations might look like. Then we, as we move closer to January, February, start working directly with schools and departments, discuss where students are enrolling, especially this is at the secondary where our kids choosing to take classes because that will drive what areas we might reduce. So if you have only seven kids taking course A, then maybe we're not offering course A, and that may impact these staff because again, we're trying to have student interest drive what we're doing so that we continue to meet student needs. And then we give the various departments and schools the reduction targets, and they give us our ideas or their ideas on what might best meet those targets with the least impact. And they're where, they know their schools better than anyone else, and so they make those recommendations to Cabinet, which superintendent is on that. And then ultimately, that comes before the board, and we work to collaborate and communicate with the school board, the staff, and the community, but we do try to start with the staff. So I know some of you heard through Nextdoor and other ways about reductions before you heard here, and that's because we had our initial conversation with staff because we do not want staff to hear for the first time there being reductions in their area through a school board public notice or through a school board meeting. Next slide. So, which I'll be, I would be presenting this a bit later, but just sort of the, as I've highlighted, the district reduction plan with staffing starts with non-reduction across the district. This, again, not backfilling people who are on leave or not renewing people who don't have a right to continuing contract or letters, or unlimited letters of assignments if they're classified. And only after that will we riff. Right now, we're looking at reducing a 1.0 FTE administrative position. What you heard today is that we're looking at adjusting our classified nurse staffing model. This will maintain the two certified nursing positions we have at the middle and high school and one nursing position at Northwood, but then having clerks, healthroom clerks or paraprofessionals, excuse me, at the other three elementary schools. So you continue to have one nurse per large, per like level, for lack of a better term. There's a 2.2 FTE reduction for certified library services. This maintains a 1.0 certified librarian to oversee the library program in the district and its staffs are libraries with library clerks. So the libraries actually will be open more than they were under the current model or they are under the current model because we have projected or budgeted for there to be library clerks for more hours than we have certified librarians. And as I think one of the public speakers noted, the idea is that the library clerks can do some of the functions that even volunteers do of checking in and out books and what have you, but they can also deliver the lessons that are created by the certified librarian. We're reducing our instructional coaches by 2.8 FTE. There's reductions in special services by 1.4 FTE. Again, that's someone, it's aligning to our enrollment and our student needs. And our secondary positions, they are sort of across the board, driven by student enrollment, and that's a total of 2.1 FTE.
What are those positions?
They are in Exhibit A, but they range from world language, specifically Spanish and French. There's, I think, a .2, and I'm doing this by memory, but I can get the specifics later. But .2 in English Language Arts, .4 in Social Studies. So they're like bits here and there, but that doesn't mean that they're not impactful.
Well, I think the challenge part of that is, as Fred mentioned, the timelines don't match. The timelines of these things don't necessarily match either because we, the high school right now is trying to work on their main schedule, and so they're trying to predict the best they can which courses they may or may not offer in middle school. We're a little behind them, about a month, and so we're trying to figure that out, so we're making best projections. So some of these possible reductions might not actually occur based on enrollment, but it's just trying to guess in a lot of ways.
Yeah, my recollection is that for levies reduction, the majority, I don't want to say we're administrative, I don't recall precisely, but at least a large portion. So a couple of questions. One, what is the size of our instructional coaching staff currently? And then are there opportunities for greater cuts on the administrative side, outsourcing perhaps certain services to a third party?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So our instructional coaches are certificated staff, but you're including them in the administrative bucket?
I'm including them as instructional coaches, just how many instructional coaches?
Got it.
Well, so they'll continue to be four instructional coaches at the elementary, at the high school and secondary.
The middle school, there'll be 1.6, reduction from two to 1.6. And the high school, I think, reduction of 1.8 to 1.2. Yeah, so a reduction of 0.4 at the middle and high school in terms of instructional coaches.
And then there'll still be two special services instructional coaches, and we've not made adjustments to the technology instructional coaches.
Yeah. I think on the administration side, you know, some of the other districts haven't already gone through some of those. You know, we eliminated two elementary positions. We didn't backfill a high school position. We didn't backfill my assistant superintendent position. So we've been doing them along the way because we had to do them earlier on. And so, you know, we're trying to run it the best we can. In terms of outsourcing the third-party contractors, you know, those would be, you know, administrative decisions that we'd have to weigh down the road. Some of these, though, don't have the same RIF implications, so those reductions could be made in different places as well.
I have questions about the proposed nursing cuts.
Next slide.
But, okay, perfect, next slide.
Well, then, so I'm going to turn it over. Are there more questions about sort of how we got here? Because Aaron is going to speak to sort of how we reached the decision with respect to the elementary reductions, and then Andrew was going to add some of the other alternatives.
So we didn't answer your question.
But can you just explain the difference between a certified nurse and a classified nurse?
Sure. A certified nurse holds an ESA and is holding a position where a certificate is required. We do have some classified nurses. Educational.
ESA.
I know, what does it stand for?
Educational Support Associate, I think.
Great.
Don't go beyond it. But basically, it's like a teacher.
So they go to school for a little while longer. They usually go back to a teaching college. PLU is the one that a lot of nurses go to for their ESA. OTs can be ESAs, or OTs can just have their OT certification but work as an occupational therapy assistant or as classified. So the ESA is extra certification they get to work in an educational setting. So you can have an RN license with the ESA certification, and then you are a certificated salary person versus an hourly classified, even though you have an RN as your certification.
It stands for Educational Staff Associate.
Yes.
With certificate from the state of Washington.
Yeah, I just found me. I'm sorry.
SOPs, OTs, psychs.
Nurses.
But as far as nursing skills.
They're the same.
They're the same.
The things that they gain experience in is things like participating in the IEP process, writing goals that might be associated or participating there, whereas an RN who doesn't have the ESA, that, those are some of the case examples.
And to answer with respect to the reductions, the reductions are going to be seen at the elementary or the proposed reductions will be at the elementary, and the elementary currently doesn't have an ESA assigned to it. They just have nurses, and those are either RNs or LPNs.
So maybe if your questions aren't answered on this next slide, we can reach back to them. So it's interesting because for the past 20 years, I've been on the reduction side at the building level, and it's not fun. It's not fun for the staff members, it's not fun for the administrators. It's a challenging dynamic to do that, especially when we are in late March, we still have three months of the school year to go, so it's really challenging. But at the last board meeting, you guys asked, in terms of the elementary, in terms of the nursing librarians, what else do we consider? Or what else can we consider? So we wanted to kind of talk to you about a dive that we continue to do. We've already obviously done it once, but we went back into a deeper dive into some elementary possible things we considered for, and for, give your thoughts on things that maybe you want us to consider more, go back and discuss more. Just a reminder that the elementary is a piece of the puzzle. We also have middle school, high school, central office reductions, but specifically you wanted us to look back at the elementary model and why did the conclusion come, at least at that point in time, that nurses and librarians were the way to go? So just a reminder that we already, and Aaron alluded to this, we already are doing some cuts in the elementaries. The instructional coach, there's one instructional coach that will be reduced for next year. We have some technology specialists that will be reduced or minimized. We have our SEL coordinator, and we have some special services staff. So all of those in conjunction with talking to district officials, school administrators are things that we're going to unfortunately reduce. We did look into teaching staff. Is there a way to reduce teaching staff? And there's, there is, but it has a little bit of a challenges attached to it. So K3, in K3, you must, can maintain a ratio of 17 to 1 in terms of students to staff. So if we were to cut there, we would be penalized. Probably the Probably the penalty of the cut would be more than the cut itself. And so that's probably not a direction that, that would be wise to go. In four or five, we looked, what happened if we cut a section in the classroom of fourth and fifth? The impact of that would be class size would roughly be about 27 versus about 23, 24 that we have now. They are options, but they do come with, with a cost to those.
And can I interject only that the librarians, while they teach, and there's no question about that, that their teaching does not count generally towards our K3 compliance?
Thank you. We also, we, we, we looked at the teaching staff, then we looked at other, other staff in the elementary buildings to see, is there capacity there for, for some trimming to keep some of the other positions? We looked at other certified staff. We have staff devoted to learning support. We have staff devoted to MTSS, which you've heard about through a presentation throughout the year. We have specialists, certified specialists. So that was an area we looked at. Didn't think that that was an option we wanted to pursue. And when I say we, it's the, it's the building principals as well as district office people having those conversations. We looked at classified staff. Is there places in the office staff that we can trim? And Reeves, I know, looked again at tech support that's classified staff in the building. So is that place we could trim a little bit from elementaries to save money? So that was something considered, but not something, at least in our initial blush that we looked at. We have a lot, rightfully so, we have a lot of student supervision. Most schools have about 16 hours devoted to recess per day to supervise kids. We also have staff members at, at the bus, the bus drop-off, keeping kids safe. So that's a pretty significant cost, but that's, I don't think anybody wants to sacrifice student safety. So that's not an area we necessarily need to.
We also have contractual obligations in there that you might hear other school districts don't necessarily have where our recesses are covered on both, on all three portions of the day or before and after school. We have supplementals and, or different things where we're not asking teachers to be out there doing rotations of covering car pickup and drop-off. So there's some contractual things too that make that challenge.
Yeah, that leads to the last bullet point. We have contractual obligations that we. It's okay. It's okay. You were burying the lead on that. There are some contractual things that we have in our contract. We have a three-year contract with the MIA. We have, as Fred, Fred talked about, drop-off things or pickup duties. We also have supplementals that we've negotiated. So those are things we really can't touch or don't want to touch because we, we've made that agreement with our association. So we kind of beat the bushes to see, are there other ways we can make cuts at the elementary level in addition to the other levels and the district office to see, are there other ways to do things? And I, I kind of present that to you to get your thoughts because that was what you asked, what else have you considered? And so Maggie, talk.
I have a lot of questions.
Sure.
Okay. Starting with, you talked about the four or five increase in classes, but have you looked at more combined classrooms, like more fourth and fifth grade combined classrooms? Because from, from just being on the, the, you know, Lick Ridge path, like it seems like that's worked pretty well there for the classrooms that have done it.
The, so the answer in terms of the technical part of the answer is yes. We, we've looked to see, can we create some efficiencies with split classes? I'm not the right person to talk to about the education part of split classes, but Dr. Reynolds, that might be you. But we have looked at that to see, are there ways to create efficiencies through splits?
And one way to do that, you know, and, and we are looking, not every class, you know, you need the right kind of combination next to each other, three, four. But as, as Erin said, you know, we could cut another teacher, but that might be kind of two halves because you create combination classes. So however, that would work. But all of those efficiencies, absolutely. And they may still need to be, they still may be needed. If we get an influx of first graders or second graders, to keep that K3 compliance, we may have to do a combination class in two schools. Those are decisions that kind of roll through as we get into summer too.
So that was one question. I have a lot of concerns about the nursing reduction like I had before, having heard from parents, having myself like of a medically complicated kiddo and two older ones who wanted a system. And then after tonight, hearing from all the, the speakers, like I'm kind of left with more questions. So I just, I don't need to have answers to all these questions tonight, but I think like as we kind of move forward through the spring, like I, I would really, to support this, I would really need to hear answers to some of the questions that were raised. For example, who is going to do the health plans? Like are the people that are going to kind of cover each of those schools doing the health plans? Are they like qualified to do the health plans? And if they're not the ones doing the health plans, if you either have, you know, contract nurses coming to do the health plans or your, your certified nurse doing the health plans, then the people doing the health plans are not the people in the nurse's office in those other elementary schools. So they're not going to know all the like minutiae of like every kid's, you know, background and needs to be or whatever, you know? So, so that's one question. Another question is, it is kind of concerning about like the assistants needing to work under a nurse's license. Like I, my housemate just graduated from nursing school last week. I saw how hard she worked for that. She doesn't have her license yet, but I can't imagine herself putting her license, you know, her hard-won license and professional reputation on the line for people that she might be involved in training, but isn't able to supervise directly one-on-one every single day. So like that, that's like, that feels like it's putting the remaining nurses in a really difficult position. So kind of questions about that. And then like, if, if there is an elementary school that has a full nurse and the others do not, are, you know, would we allow families to transfer their kiddo that has seizures or has diabetes or has, you know, anaphylactic peanut reactions to transfer to Northwood outside of our normal, you know, school assignment process? But then that's asking a lot of the families, right? It's like you have to choose between your child's health and safety or their wonderful community and teachers that they love in the school where they're doing really well. And then it starts to feel like you're not really treating all kids equally if like kids with medical needs are not getting to continue on in their home school, which we know is so important on this island, you know, their school they come back to or whatever. So that's a concern as well. And just like, you know, when you look at like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, I am a huge supporter of librarians. I in no way want to say, you know, nurses are more important than librarians, but survival and safety is a very core need. And you can't learn if you aren't safe and you can't learn even if you don't feel safe. And I can say from my own kids' experience that a lot of kids with sort of life or death health issues experience a lot of secondary anxiety, you know, what will happen if I eat the wrong thing? Where's my EpiPen, you know, that kind of thing. And so it's like, if you're worrying about that all day and you don't know that you have this wonderful nurse that you've gotten to know over the years, kind of watching your back, like that's not really conducive to living for this kid. So those, I don't need answers to any of those questions right now. I'm just saying like those are, are of serious concern to me. And, and one of my experiences with the, with Nurse Bonnie at the middle school is that she actually helped one of my kids get diagnosed with like a really weird persistent health problem where he had missed 25 days of school in seventh grade. And she was the only one who was like kind of pushed back and went, take that kid to the doctor. You know? She was like, there's something going on here. Take the kid to the doctor. But if she weren't like a fully qualified nurse with like, with eyes on the same kids, you know, day after day after day, I don't think she would have had the competence necessarily to do that. And we were really grateful to her.
Yeah. I don't try to know if you wanted to, either if you wanted to respond to.
Only that, those are classified and classified is not before you tonight. This is all certified. And so those are all definitely conversations of coming back, but we're not even bringing you a certified RIF list tonight. And so that are classified. So that's much later and definitely can have lots of those answers.
Right. And I, I would add, I was going to speak to the same things Superintendent Reynolds. I think that is not actually for you, that's in the next agenda item to review tonight because we're talking about certified nurse. And all the elementary nurses, none of them are certified, at least in how they're operating at this point in time. And I just want to assure you, the model that we are moving towards in respect, like we will be considering all the things that at the end of the day, health and safety of the kids does matter. And that is paramount. So as, as others have said, that there's models like that in other districts. So, so we're going to be very cautious as we approach that because similar to what you said, you have librarians, librarians personally love my elementary librarians. But they, we definitely want to take the health and safety of students.
And a reminder, the state to begin with on their staffing model, doesn't think we need nurses in all of our schools to begin with.
I was going to ask, when is that funding to be up?
It'd be 1.92 nurses in all of our elementaries. It would be 1.1 at the middle school and 1.16 at the high school.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, to perhaps state what I think is, you know, maybe the obvious conclusion, what we're dealing with is the consequences of entering into a contract that appears that we couldn't afford. And now there's cuts that we're contemplating that I don't think we contemplated when we entered into that contract. And I find it disappointing.
I don't know what the point of that is. People deserve to make a living wage and deserve the salary they're getting and we shouldn't have to run schools off their backs. That being said, my questions are, if we increase four or five grades, four or five to 27 and/or add recess supervision to existing contracts, what can we save?
What was the second thing?
Adding recess supervision. So instead of, instead of supervisors being on the playground, that's whether it's supplements or whatever, but to existing staff, to reduce staff in that way with, comes with added benefits and all that. I'm just asking questions because I'm just wondering, like, are those things that should be negotiated with MIA? Is it, would it, would that provide a big enough buffer to save some of these positions?
So, so the first part of your question, so when we use teacher budgets, including benefits and everything, it's a, the, I think the business office uses between $130,000, $140,000.
Per teacher.
Per, per teacher, that's the average. So, you know, if we were to increase fourth grade to the 27 number, that's probably one teacher we could save or one teacher that we could eliminate. And so that's 140,000, let's say.
And is that district-wide or for school?
District-wide.
So one.
One and four, and we could do one and five, it would, that would be the same, one and fifth grade. That would be the same.
Right. So one, one, fourth grade teacher and one fifth grade teacher and that equivalent salary would?
Would, would probably, with, with my, with my back of the napkin math that I did earlier today, that could probably be a similar amount to the nurses.
Okay.
And on the second question, in our contract, we have two really 15-minute periods for our teachers on both sides of lunch.
Right.
And so.
I'm not saying it's easy. I'm just asking.
Yeah. That would have to be renegotiated in order to do. So we haven't really done the math on that because of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, and then the thing I would add is that you think about, as I said, it's about 16 hours per school, per elementary. So times, that's about 64 hours a day of, of time devoted to playground supervision and bus pickup, drop-off, things like that. So it's a, it is a.
Well, bus pickup, drop-off is already supplemental. Is it at every school? The ones I'm familiar with.
Yeah. Supplemental if it's on the cert side. If it's on a classified, then it's hourly.
Right. So I mean, my question is if there's a system shift, so the recess supervision becomes supplemental instead of a job or two.
Yeah. If you didn't have an afternoon recess, if you will, so let's just say that and you have a morning, then there's potentially you would have staff who wouldn't need to stay through the end of the school day. Conversely, if you have different staff who are supervising before and after school drop-off and you don't have the same, then, you know, you can, you don't need people for as long during the day.
I'm just trying to get what those changes, the perspective of, of what those options would save.
Sure.
I'm not proposing.
No, I hear you.
So with that, I just sort of addresses our thinking with elementary and how we got there. So I think to highlight that it's a, there's multiple voices involved and it's carefully looking at what the, the possible options are and, and trying to land on the one that's the least impactful, but recognize it's still very impactful. And we talked about sort of an exemplar of how we look to reduce costs in other ways through the system.
You know, as Fred and Erin had mentioned, you know, we're looking at all, like a lot of different ways to reduce costs. It's not just this year. It's things that we do annually as we think about power savings, we think about saving on travel for, you know, PD conferences, other things like that. But I just listed here some examples of, of what we are doing in technology. Again, it's something we do annually, but every year we spend roughly about $850,000 on software and services to support curriculum instruction and operations. Again, that's across all three of those areas. And every year, our technology team, including our instructional tech coaches, will review our, our services to determine if there's, you know, solutions that we can either adjust by looking at other alternatives, if they're continuing to meet the need, if there's a need to still continue using the service, or if we can adjust the scope of that service. So a, a good example of that is, is we sometimes will look at services and say, you know, we want to shift this from a district-wide license to a six or 12 grade license because that's what we're really seeing, the adoption, the usage, and we have, you know, alternative tools at the, at the elementary. This year, our technology team reviewed approximately 50 services that totaled $260,000. And from that $260,000, we were able to identify $70,000 in services that we have decided that we will not need to be doing for the 25, 26 school year. If you look at this slide, it just gives some examples. This is not the totality of the $70,000 that we'll be able to reduce. These are just some examples that I pulled out. Homeroom is a data dashboard through school data solutions that we have utilized for many years. And we've had these discussions, our instructional tech coaches along with our tech team, our learning services staff have started to develop dashboards to provide the same information, but we're doing that work in-house. So rather than paying an external vendor to host that service for us and create those dashboards, we are doing that in-house. There is some impact to any reduction. And so when we think about doing that in-house, that means that we are using some of our, our staff time to continue to maintain and update those. So I don't want to make it seem like, hey, we're going to be able to do that at zero cost. There is some cost associated with it. It's just less than the cost that we use, uh, paying to use a contracted service. Now, the other great example, the state actually selected a common application called SchoolWings. We talked about this earlier, where we were previously paying for that. So far, whatever is that there is no cost to the district for that transition to SchoolWings. And I've asked several times as we're preparing our budgets for next year, but that's another example of a cost that we were able to reduce because of changes being made at the, at the state. Learning Ally is a, a solution that helps provide online audiobooks and accessible materials for some of our students. And while we still want to continue to support our students, we are looking at repurposing a portion of that, those funds. So taking some, you know, taking some of those funds, adding them into our Sora subscription and our Overdrive subscription to be able to continue to support the needs of their students, but at a reduced cost. So those are just some of the software examples. We're also looking at other operational costs, learning cost copier and managed print reductions. We spend roughly about $160,000 annually on our copier equipment lease, our managed copier services and our managed printer service. We, we do, we review those regularly. We made an adjustment in 2022 where we actually reduced from 25 copiers to 22. And now we're continuing to look at this and say, you know, can we reduce an additional three copiers? One example of that copier is the room that's on the opposite side of this hallway used to be a, oh, I'm sorry, there was a conference room where the neuroscientists were, Mike, our neuroscientists were in this space. They moved in there. But since that conference room is no longer being used, there's a copier there that, that is no longer needed. And so we're looking at taking those off our contracts, but we're not continuing to pay that equipment lease. We're also surveying our staff to determine how we can potentially reduce some of our classroom printers and shift more of our printing over to copiers. And it's cheaper to print to the copiers than it is to our printers. Our staff do a tremendous job in already following that practice, but there are some additional savings that we can gain by reducing classroom printers there in addition to power capital of replacing printers and also just that reduced cost in printing to a copier itself. With that, you know, when I've talked to my staff and the staff out of the buildings, our, our teachers really like the printers and there's a lot of instructional benefit for having the good materials and to be able to make adjustments in real time. And so the big thing that we've emphasized in that is we want to reduce costs by also, but also understand that we need to limit the impact of those changes, right? And it's kind of, you know, a part of what you're describing here earlier, you know, throughout this meeting, we anticipate to be able to save roughly about $30,000 annually with some of the changes that we're making on. We anticipate to be able to save roughly about 30,000 dollars annually with some of the changes that we're making on printers and copiers. And then finally, the line.
Secretary Gervord, quick question.
Oh, yeah, I mean, just, well, I appreciate savings and efficiency and cap tech. I think for the viewers at home, it's important to recognize that funds within cap tech are segregated. So it's not fungible just with paying salary and deficits on on the salary side. So I, well, I'm encouraged to hear about it, it's a little peripheral. It seems to the reduction in force that we're discussing because they're separate accounts.
They are separate, but it's still all examples of how we are trying to continue to be efficient and we use that, as we've discussed before, to help to support the whole general fund as we go together. And that's where you've seen the backs and force and you haven't always agreed with that Director Gervord in terms of how those have been used. But our state auditors and others have continued to say that the way that we have been able to try to pay for costs that truly are related to technology are within the the scope of what that levy has afforded us.
The last thing I want to mention here is just on our phone service reductions. In 2002, we actually transitioned from an onsite system to a voice over IP system, primarily looking at reducing infrastructure costs as we had an aging infrastructure on our phone system, we'd have to replace several of our servers, a lot of those those call managers that were there. So we migrated to a voice over IP and online hosted system. At that time, we were able to then reduce our services with CenturyLink as our phone provider. And then another added benefit of that is we, as Erin will attest to, we used to have scan codes for long distance calling and when you use an online voice over IP system, you no longer have to pay for that long distance service. So there were some costs that we were able to reduce there, you know, back in 2022. We currently have 450 extensions across the district and we've identified 40 extensions that we can remove from our service agreement. So just looking at additional ways that we can reduce there. We're also looking at plan levels and features to determine if we can just actually just bump down some of the services there still providing that phone for safety and security reasons in there, but just at a lower tier plan. And that's an additional 10,000 that we're hoping to be able to save there on the the phone systems. So just some examples of ways that we're looking outside of staffing on how to to reduce our our costs.
So then another piece of it is looking at the fees and we'll be bringing you a more comprehensive list, but we've been meeting with PTA leaders, booster clubs, ASB and school admin assistants, principals, staff, athletic directors, and certainly looking at our name rate districts. What we are looking at, and we'll be hosting a fourth grade information night, I believe, in two weeks. And that is looking at a fine arts fee for band orchestra, choir and drama, somewhere in that 200 to 600 dollar range, and that's for the entire school year. Middle school, looking at things with some increases to cover the full costs of things like jazz band that are extra outside the day or some of our art or ceramics fees. We've also talked to the middle school about a slight increase in athletics. They don't carry nearly the costs that our high school does because of transportation and not having postseason to the same extent. And then a slight increase on ASB fees. High school is probably where we're looking at the greatest increase, really looking at an athletic transportation fee. That's something that other districts have done. And as we've looked at a cost is certainly transportation and then also that athletic participation to cover costs. Increase in the ASB fee for our high school. And then we have a growing number of alumni transcripts and postgraduate support and we've been not charging that in the past. A lot of colleges and universities and everyone else do when you go back for them. And so looking to do some fees for transcripts and there's the 40 dollars includes more than just transcripts. There's a whole support that goes with that. And then lastly, we do testing for non-MISD students who may live in the community but attend private schools or whatnot. And there are administration costs for that, there are testing costs for that. So looking at some of those and then certainly, as we've talked about with our credit card processing, fees are not going to close the gap nor are any one piece, but we want to be transparent about the conversations that we're having. And then lastly, before we kind of, you know, go back to just some open conversations, you know, I think these are the dynamics that are at play for all of us and the expectations that you have with the system and ultimately me, how do we maintain those student focused fundamentals with staff camp compensation that can attract and retain great educators? Do it in a budget and financial way that's going to lead to health and sustainability, overseeing that financial administration with a fund balance and then certainly maintaining the instructional program as a whole. So that's kind of just an overview, just a, you know, it's a overview for you to kind of get a sense of how we arrived at, you know, how we're trying to overcome some of the challenges and for you to see some of the thinking that goes into this.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate this sort of like multi-tiered finding bits in lots of different buckets approach the district is taking, you know, a little bit, a little bit of savings is still a little bit of savings. I'm interested in the fee increases and just clarifying, because I know like a lot of music programs don't have fees at all currently. So are we sort of agreeing them in line with like the athletic fees? Because I know that athletic teams currently have fees, so.
They are still going to be less than athletic fees on some of those for sure. But yes, starting to add some of those fees in, you know, we have the morning or afternoon jazz band at our middle school and high school. Those become eighth periods outside of the seventh period. How do we cover the cost of that so that it isn't that it's cost neutral rather than losing on some of those things? So really trying to figure out where we can. And then always noting that we build into the budget opportunities for scholarships and financial support so that none of this becomes a barrier for our students.
Thank you.
So first of all, I recognize that it's nine courses to lift, so just thinking that we want to. Yeah. Because there's, but I see that the two questions, one is related to the nurse. Excellent, so two questions, but I was also curious about why nurse would, would be the one that you would choose to have the certified nurse and not, since you have a high school and then you have a middle school, like why would you not? And on libraries.
It could change slightly and it's it's just like in special services where you've got to put the put the people where you have the needs. With the preschool program though, we tend to have students who at that age and whatnot have tended to need that, so it's come up, but it could shift.
Oh, I was curious about that, but I do, I'm concerned about the liability that might affect the district by having. And also for the librarians, I'm curious also the cost of the all the the work that they do behind the scenes for the teachers, how much in hours and time we actually are going to shift to the teachers and how much that would cost in in labor hours for the teachers? And that we are not considering that portion when talking about cutting that and adding that to the load of the teachers and how does this move into the budget? It's too much information and do have to process it, but those are two that have to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, it, we we all heard many, impassioned, obviously. People love our librarians, they do, I don't know how we quantify their the work they do for our teachers because they are for teachers and and kids, they are great resources. So I don't even know how to quantify that.
Well, I think it's mostly on the teacher, like how much time do they ask like to fill the curriculum? Like if that's two hours, that's you're adding that to the cost of what that teacher will be doing. So I think that that added cost here is not necessarily reflected here.
Sure.
It's just seen as a position and that's it. And I think that there's a lot more to see in in those numbers. But yes, it is, it is somebody that that they are in direct contact with, with students.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take that. Yeah, I think it's that's why we wanted to kind of show you some of the other things we consider because you have the the ability to weigh in on those considerations. And if there's something that you see that we're not seeing or that you as a board value more than we value or or prioritize, not value, but prioritize higher, then that's something that we can have a conversation about for sure.
And then I, you know, I forgot to add this in, but you know, I'll be meeting, I think Michelle's still helping me figure it out of meeting with the PTA presidents who have interest in trying to help figure out, you know, where is there a PTA partnership in this? We have our schools foundation. I did talk to Tammy as recently as the earlier this week and, you know, they're ahead of their fundraising goals right now. And those are other opportunities that we have and we're fortunate to be able to look at those. It's just unfortunate that right now we have to plan for the worst because of also other timelines. And that's why this was only a first reading and it's a process that we go through because it's not, yes, we cut this or whatnot, there, this is what we have to think about in terms of authority. But it doesn't mean that it has to happen in these exact ways, so it's part of this process.
And the other question will be, I was jumping right now, so sorry. When you talk about Spanish and French, where will that be the impact at? Will be high school, middle school or?
Can we just go straight into that agenda item, President?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So just pulling up the, it's a perfect segue into the first reading of the RIF and if you bring it up, Andrew. Section E, yep, the exhibit.
Oh, you want the exhibit?
There's two exhibits, you probably want to go to.
Exhibit A. All right, Director Martinez, now over to you with your question.
I'm going to have a lot more questions to say this, I don't know.
It doesn't really specify between middle school and preschool, it just says 1.2 FTE.
So what we've had happen here, I'll just frame it in Erin and Erin can fill in, but this is really driven on student enrollment in courses and where have students been requesting courses?
Yeah, so I wanted to sort of back up a little bit if that's okay. Well, it's before you, the first reading of the the RIF resolution, which is the other document, which essentially identifies that we've looked at other areas and we've come to the conclusion that we we cannot fill our budget shortfall without impacting staff. And so the exhibit identifies the areas by endorsements that we think that we will have to reduce staff. And this is, we're seeking authority to reduce up to 8.1 FTE of certificated staff. The reason why we're seeking it now is we're backing up from a statutory deadline of March 15th and we will have had to, or May 15th, excuse me, deliver the RIF notices. So that's why this is today. This is authority that doesn't necessarily mean that we will exercise full authority. And in fact, I've said this, well, each time I've come here for the last, I think, three years now, and we've not exercised full authority in any of those instances just because people after the RIF is approved decide to resign, move, go on leave or whatever. So or we get more enrollment and so it changes what we need. So this just gives us capacity, so we don't have to exercise it at all.
To answer your question on that, like, does the deadline get extended depending on the legislative session in terms of for the RIF notification?
Only if the legislator puts that into, I think the last time that was being considered, I think the legislator have would have to.
Overrun.
When they they have to give authority for that, as my understanding.
So the answer is, it's unlikely, it is possible, but unlikely. So to answer your question, Director Martinez, the reductions are largely at the high school and is driven by enrollment. It's just not sustainable to run classes at seven and 12 or even the low teens because we don't have the luxury of making some classes big so that we can have these small classes, right? Under our contract and it's just, it may not be advisable, like it's not, it's not preferable without super large classes anyway. But we may have some reductions at the middle school as well. And so again, that's why we're looking at capacity because we're still in the enrollment process and finalizing numbers.
And can I give an example to that, the the French example? We, right now at IMS, as we, we're about probably 90% of our enrollment is in our our course, our selection that is in right now in our eighth grade French class, we have 31. Now, if we can get five, six more, seven more kids, that might be a possibility of splitting into two. If we can't wait after run one, we might have to to use this authority to RIF there. So it's that timelines don't match. We're also trying, you know, Dr. Rundell and he and Henry and I have been meeting with a group of students from the French. They currently go to the French American School that have enrolled at IMS and are wondering what French options might be for them at the middle school. So can we figure out how to to enroll them in our upper level French at the middle school, boost those numbers and then not have to use that that RIF capacity? So that's an example of the how, one of the challenges we're trying to solve, but we're not positive we can solve it yet, so that's why we have to put it on there. And even by the second reading, which I don't know when that is. We might have a different answer for you. It might be, yeah, we've solved the problem, you might not see that on the next next reading.
I'm just thinking, I'm very sorry, please do understand this, this is a lot of information. I have not suggested this. But I'm curious, I know that eighth grade Spanish and French do count towards grade in the high school that has for graduation, but not seventh grade, is that correct?
That's not quite correct. So our seventh, our seventh and eighth grade course combined.
It's combined.
Equals equals the one credit to high school.
That's great clarification.
Yeah.
I want to see how it fits here. And my other question is when you said this is endorsed by endorsed by like the student, the art?
No, no, by endorsement areas. So for example, if it says English language arts is a reduction, that the class isn't called English language arts that may be impacted. That's what the teacher endorsement is, they could be teaching, I don't know, poetry. I I don't know, like a different or English nine.
When you add the area, I get it.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not being endorsed by students, but it is driven by student enrollment in courses. So that, yeah, does that happen? And as I said previously, like this is not ultimately where we want to go because it does impact people and it's just trying to make the best decision knowing that we need to make impacts. Because I think the gentleman he says you have a math problem that you have to solve and you have to solve it with this portion of your budget, which is 83% and that's people. It's the most painful way to solve it, but.
Next, so the next steps here, we continue working behind the scenes, looking at all of these. You know, if there are updates or changes that we're looking at this and your updates, I'll give you those. But you don't won't do any voting for the final resolution on the certificated until the 24th of April. And we anticipate that that's likely the meeting that will bring forward the first reading for classified.
Okay, okay, thank you. So given the problem we get, is any of your ideas in the meeting? I would propose that we go through just a naming district facilities policy because it's pretty quick review and discussion at this point and a lot of people just want to keep them. And then the the two newer policies, we respond to at the next meeting if we can. Is that reasonable?
That works for them.
I'm sorry to.
Yeah, I I will say, for me, I think that.
If you think you can do the immigration resolution fast.
No, I will, I will say that I would, I would, I think that it's not that it's fast. Yeah, I think that when we do talk before on what is pressing or important, right? Certain members of the community, right? This is pressing for a portion of our community. Right, and and maybe it's not for for others, but for districts, a percentage of our communities that are.
I would argue we can do vote, but I really do think students, if you've got homework and you've got to be up in the morning, like feel like reading almost like our our student reps used to leave at eight, just on the dot, no matter what was going on. So we, you know, we're not in a middle. So we, you know, we're not in a middle work, we're there. So let's just go as fast as we can and see what we can get done. Let's look at the naming district, so board policy 1003, board policy 6970, the naming of district facilities.
So we went through, anytime you turn policy written by humanities people and, and others, and then you turn it over to an attorney, you get, you don't get any changes in substance, but you get changed in the language to make it clearer for interpretation. So nothing in there really changes significantly, other than there are some things that you had asked around the commercial entities and you'll notice some changes there, but don't be alarmed by all of the blue. It's not an attempt to totally rewrite it, it's really to put it into more policy type language and less the narrative that we had before.
So I have some really schoolly minor, what I would consider kind of friendly amendments, like typos and things that I caught. Can I just go through them really fast? There's two extra words at the end of the first chunk. It should just end with honor the districts and communities' values, histories, and goals, period. Right now it says end goals of the.
Under number one.
Under number one purpose.
Yeah, I see it.
You see it?
Yeah.
That just, those are just need to be ten. And then, then the section two, number three, naming committee. I think it's a little excessively wordy and I would suggest removing the words formed only. It just said, if you just say like a committee appointed to oversee the naming or renaming process, I think it's perfectly clear.
Yeah, as long as we know that they are not making the decision, I think that was the only reason of that. And as long as we're okay with that, then we can.
I think it's super clear elsewhere, but you could also add to, so you could also, you could say to oversee a possible naming or renaming process.
We're just adding words now.
I know, but it's still clearer than saying like appointed by, formed to, yeah.
I'm just teasing. I think that, I think that language actually is really important.
A possible, it's not assuming that.
I find the possible, but the overseeing or to.
Or only.
Or there's other ways to say it, to recommend to the board or something, but that needs to be clear that it's a, that it's a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
Not a decision.
Sure, so to recommend. Uh, something, anyway, just some, some, that could get a little bit. And then section three, number four. I think you could just delete this commercial entities prohibited because it's covered in section four, part three. Like literally there. It says, in section four, part three, it's like facility name shall not reference a commercial entity, corporation, or brand unless the board determines that special circumstances exist, which is exactly the same as saying, facility name shall not reference or promote corporate entities, commercial brands, or businesses without board approval by the board. It's like the same thing.
So strike three, point four.
Point four, yeah. Okay, and then in section four, point six. Eligibility, right now it says no individuals shall be eligible, it should say no staff member shall be eligible. We've kind of lost that in the shuffle, I think. Because if you say no individual, then it's confusing if they never worked for the district. Like, what if you want to name it after like Buzz Aldrin, you know?
Well, but it could be.
I thought it was a street.
I think, yeah.
It's like historical figure or.
Yeah.
Or a student.
A student first.
Yeah, I mean, and I think the point is that it needs to be the time period.
If I reject a separation from the district or the return, then that's saying you can only name things after people who have been affiliated with their district.
No, it just says if they were, if they've been in the district and lack, if there's a period of five years.
That's fine.
So like graduates.
And. And then finally, section eight. There's just like a wrong word here. It's like section eight, part two. It should say, once a name is approved, it shall remain in place for a minimum of 25 years instead of at minimum. Otherwise, I'm super happy with this. I feel like this means everybody's stated goals and needs and is responded to things that people were not sure about before, so I'm super happy with it.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions, comments?
I appreciate all of the work on this. I, I, you know, I've been moderately uncomfortable with this from the get go. And this is, I, I think this policy is, is the good place to land, that it provides, it provides the process should it be used and, yeah, so thank you for everyone's hard work on it.
Okay.
Do you want to approve it tonight, make the changes and bring it back to you at the next meeting? How do you want to proceed?
If everyone's okay with those super minimal changes, can just, I vote on it tonight.
But we don't have the, what's the change on, I, the, taking, taking extra words out is easy, but the two point three and the overseeing, yeah, I mean, that language needs to.
Committee appointments and or district leadership formed only to oversee, or only to.
You could strike the form, formed only, wasn't that like the suggestion?
Yeah, that was my suggestion, to oversee the naming or renaming process after. And you could, you could add a sentence afterward saying the board makes the final decision.
I think that, I think that's clear, I would place, yeah, no, I, then I did, then I misunderstood. It could just take out formed only, that's.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Formed only.
Formed only.
And then we, then we'll see the minutes of it.
Yeah.
But I, I think they're simple enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Just I have a.
So move to approve the policy with the minor clerical alteration that we're just discussing.
All in favor of this policy being approved, please say aye, students?
Aye.
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? That is two zero students, five zero. Board members, thank you all very much for your patience, students.
And your hard work on it.
Yeah. And to everyone who worked on it, thank you, Jessica, helping make this happen. Moving on. Two, we're skipping social media accounts and we are moving on to the resolution on student safety, privacy, and immigration enforcement.
Can I just give a heads up, I agree of the importance of this. I am brain dead. If there's going to be much discussion, I want to be able to put my, I mean, so I'm happy to give it a go. I'm just.
And, and, and I believe that if we live it like that next time, then it will be the first reading and then the second.
I agree on the importance, I'm not.
Do you, do you want to present it or do you want us to just discuss? Because I'm sure.
I'm okay with discussing.
But I, I, we can try to be pretty quick.
Yeah, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Are there, are there two documents that are the same or are two attachments?
I can, I can sort of.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
So the first one was, was taking the National Education Association template. And Christina and I edited that and sort of used that as the basis. And then the staff took it in one of the proposals, I think is a, a good one, I mean, at least in my view. Was just swapping in Fred's email to the community, which sort of incorporates in the guidance that Reichdahl and OSPI provided in terms of how districts should handle any requests from ICE enforcement. And in my view, I actually think the Reichdahl's guidance was probably more actionable. And it's a 14-page document, so it's a little bit longer and more varied, but I actually thought better than NEA's one page. So I think it's good. I mean, in a nutshell, like it's two things. One, without a warrant, that it's, a warrant is required under our policy for letting in any immigration, so a court order for any immigration personnel. And then two is the data side, that we won't provide any data and that we're not collecting any data that we're not required to, that would be sensitive potentially from an immigration perspective. And so it's really those two. It's protocols over data and then protocols over any sort of personnel from ICE or related agencies on our properties and requiring a judicial order.
And, and, I have a question. Do you have a question?
No, no, my question is.
It's about a certain amount of due diligence that we're like.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, same, same, same goal.
Yeah.
It was just the suggestion of the, of staff, I think, to swap in Reichdahl's guidance, which in my view, I think is actually probably a little bit better than any edge.
And I wanted to ask, I, I understand the guidance portion of it. And I'm curious about if there's also legal decision about putting it as a guidance and not, because I know that there was, that the policy that it was, that was, as I mentioned, when I submitted, that it was just, we started it, it's a school job to do that portion, that the, uh, kind of how, how they will implement it to standardize language. And my question will be the why a little bit. Because when we, we talk about guidance, it, it mentions a guidance that is suggested from the superintendent. But if you are not here next year or tomorrow, then the next superintendent might have a completely different view and might hold not if it's a guidance compared to a policy that will have to actually pass through the board to ensure that there is student safety. And that is what we would make.
Sure, that would be a question when the board directors interview superintendent? No, I mean, I'm not being facetious. I'm saying that's the opportunity to say, I mean, I hear your concern, but there's a lot of things with interpretations.
I understand, and at the same time, if those school board members have not been in this historical moment, that question might not come into their mind. And then this historical moment comes again and then the children of the, and my question is, why not those guidance incorporated into a, a policy that every single staff could implement and know what they had to do? And that is kind of, is there some legal, I'm protecting the district or how, how, what is? I, I want to understand just the process here, not to make this policy stronger instead of making it look there.
So in the, I think it's hard to put in the absence of a policy, the language that is in there references a policy which we don't have. So the, there's a policy that we can definitely adopt and I have that here. Behind the scenes, Ian has been working on a website that you can't see yet, but it's going to go live probably next week. And it's going to have lots of information around supporting families or whatnot. We have no problem working on a policy or whatnot, there's just nothing to reference yet. But there, we could put into policy. However, Reichdahl's parameters there is what is the guiding law right now that people have to follow. So there's, we can go in many different directions. It's just without a policy, it's hard to reference one in a resolution.
I just think about.
Yeah. Yes, I think we're on this, maybe there's like some tweaking to be done or structurally just, you know, rejiggering it. But I think we're all on the same page, which is trying to take the guidance and, and make it a policy. So it's not just, you know, wishy washy guidance. It's that no ICE official will be allowed on the district without a valid warrant. And we're not going to collect or reveal any information.
That's the law, right?
Well, I, I think there is, like, I think the law actually is that districts have discretion. So I could cooperate, you know, could not require a warrant if ICE came to the school and say, hey, yeah, like, you know, open the doors. And the board, I think, rightfully, doesn't want to take that position, says no. So I think we're all on the same page in terms of substantive link. And then it's just a matter of reflecting in the documents that, that's clear.
Can, can we pass a resolution and then later create a policy?
Yes.
Back it up, yeah, because I just want to say that I think this is very solid. I am quite happy with this resolution. I have two things I would propose to change, very small. So one of them is the bottom of the first page, because I printed it out, where it's like the third, be it further resolved. There's just a word missing, so it's like, be it further resolved, given the likelihood of substantial disruption posed by the presence of ICE or any federal, state, or school law enforcement agency. Or local, sorry, law enforcement agency acting to enforce federal immigration laws, comma, that. You should say that, like, all of these are like, be it resolved, that something should happen, be it resolved that. So I just would suggest you add the word that.
And, and you're looking at the first version or the second version? Does, just, just ensuring.
I'm looking the version that had the Fred stuff at the bottom.
Okay, so.
And that's the one that we're considering, right?
Is that, am I looking the wrong one?
Well, I, I'm curious about it because I think there's a, two substantial difference between, and I think it's, the other difference is that this one has, it, it suggests a response team to be created. And it could, it could be the immigration response team or, or, and has. I think that it's remove the three day to have kind of, kind of how are you going to act? And, and it could be more, I know that spring break is in between and there's so many things, maybe four, five days, but two. And, but I see that there's just that slight, slight difference that.
So which one do you want to be?
I think that it is there, sorry.
Tell us which one to consider.
I'm so sorry, I, I, I got.
They're identical.
I mean, at the top.
They're artist identical.
Let me see. Totally.
So my suggestion is that, I finished telling you my quibbles. Because they're very small. And then you guys take this away.
I will look.
And then.
Only to that, I'm damned.
Figure it, figure out.
I understand their urgency and I, I'm not comfortable passing anything today. And I, it seemed like that was the intent, so then we take a look at it. I'm happy to schedule a special meeting because of the importance that we're not waiting another month. But I'm, there's, there's too much, there's too much up in the air right now.
My idea is that this does not become a first reading in May.
No, I have told you.
You can, you can, you can pass it at your next meeting.
But tonight is the first day. So I'm suggesting you guys go away and do your version control and figure out which, there's not, not huge change, difference. So then come back and the second reading will incorporate.
As long as we agree that the second version will all have a policy follow, that, that we will, that there, there will be.
Right, I think the intent is to do a resolution first and then work on a policy after that.
We can put, we can add that to the resolution.
Oh, yeah, great, yeah. So put that into the second reading, that, that, that we will be working on.
And it gets, I think, it, it's coming.
If we're going to just add that portion of it, just like it's right now, unless you want.
No, because I think we're, we're. I'm not, I'm not ready to. But I'm happy to do a special meeting. I think it is urgent. I think, I mean, I, it.
I'm also happy to do a special meeting.
Right.
Yeah, we can do Zoom meeting.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so can I finish my quibbles? So you've got that one, so in the third, on the Fred version, the version with Fred's letter. On the third section, it starts with be it further resolved, we're putting it in the bottom of the first page. There should just be a that. Just read it out loud and see, there should be a that. It should say that any request to visit a school site must be presented.
The second, last line.
Okay, that's one quibble. The other quibble is the third paragraph up near the top where it's like, whereas federal, the first page of the Fred version. I just want to add the word may in a couple of places because I feel like, it's, it's like whereas federal immigration law enforcement activities on or around district property and any transportation provided in the district to and from school sites to school sponsored activities. May, like, to me, I prefer may harmfully disrupt the learning environment. Like, it hasn't happened yet. Like, we can't say these activities harmfully disrupt, we can say would harmfully disrupt, could harmfully disrupt. Like, I don't want to say that these activities are currently harmfully disruptive because it hasn't happened yet. It's just like a quibble, but it also just feels very, like, kind of excessively confrontational, especially because the way it's written, it says on or around district property. So it's like ICE is chasing some guy down the street for some reason, which like, we would hope not. But like, they're chasing some guy down the street, like past the high school. We're saying that substantially disrupts, you know, the learning environment. So I'm just saying, just add may. Just, that's my focus.
I, I think the mindset of people who are facing this.
Yeah.
It already is harmful. It's harming. And it is local now. There was one today, not here.
In the district?
No, yeah, state.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't have to call.
Yeah, well, I, I couldn't remember exactly where it was, but it's here.
Yeah.
So it's harming and the mindset and it's psychologically damaging and it's, I, I.
It happened also in Garfield School District too.
Then, then I would say would harmfully disrupt the learning environment.
I guess also something that would be good whenever we have like a discussion would be what the experience was with those school districts. I mean, did they ask for a warrant? I mean, I mean, how did it, how did it go down? What, what, what is there to be learned? Should that inform what we're passing?
Yeah, and I feel like they did a response to because, you know, I think I mentioned it in our last meeting, that there's also fake ICE, people masquerading as ICE people going to hassle people on campuses, so. Anyway, my suggestion, maybe not may, my suggestion would be would, so consider it at least. That's it, otherwise I'm perfectly happy. That's it, otherwise I'm perfectly happy with it, and I'm happy with it.
And I wanna just also reflect um the hard work that Dan and Christine have put in, and a fast timeline to really get something that's very important to our students in our district and um everyone who lives on our island, and to get it pulled together as fast as possible, and I think that this is an unfortunate thing, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are so responsive and so quick, but it didn't matter.
And I think even, you know, now it's been, you know, pretty clear that the consensus on the board is that we won't be allowing any ICE-related individuals without a warrant, and we'll be, we're not collecting. And I guess if we have collected, there should be like perhaps a separate conversation of if we can legally purge any information that might be prejudicial or harmful.
But I think it's also so important to like regime purpose, like, we're, you know, we all left the board in Fred, you know, we all like put the board in Fred to the next board in a Fred's side office, you know, letting us clown, um, then then um, you know, the next board is also governed by this policy, so that we, it's not left up to whoever is in serving on the board to decide which to.
Well, I think we must change.
Well, yeah, sure, let's change it.
Yeah. Yeah, and thank you for advocating for keeping it unmentioned. So, so we're not gonna take action on this tonight, we are going to either have a special meeting to was this done on first reading? This is our first reading, yeah, yeah, so we're either gonna have a special meeting to discuss it further or vote on the next agenda, yeah. Okay. Maybe with a policy that we're. Maybe not, okay, so I believe we are ready to do the consent agenda. Don't have a motion.
Sure.
Second.
Okay, wait, I wanna talk about each one of them. All in favor, all those ones, um, all in favor of a prevailing consent agenda as published, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, nobody's opposed, that is two zero five zero. Uh, superintendent report and announcements.
Ian had put together the first edition of a board recap, um, and sent that out uh to get some uh feedback on that. He's continuing to kind of work on a note tonight, um, put together some things as well, but didn't know, are there any things you wanna add? Um, quickly in terms of feedback you're looking for or?
Yeah, I just, I sent it out just to get um your feedback on how it looked, the content, the presentation. Uh, I wanted to give you, I'll be quick, I wanted to give you a little bit more uh information on the presentation of how this would uh be shown on our websites and shared um on social media platforms, because whether you, whatever, whatever you put in as content, you still need to show it and have it accessible and have uh people able to get it. So there's a couple of pages that I've asked Andrew to um to show, so um what I've done is create a board news recap page, and Andrew's, I'm going to the NYSD news page now, I'm going ahead to be quick. Uh, a board recap news page modeled after the news page on the district website, so if you go to the district um website, that was, yeah, that was it. The other, the one, the, yeah, so that is the district website, so I created a page that is hidden right now on our site that would show all board uh meeting recaps that we do, whatever is in them or not in them, based on your feedback and the content. And so that would be where all the recaps would reside, that page would be a menu item on the school board menu, so when you go to the school board menu, you would find the board meeting recaps, the pages published but hidden, so when you click on a story in the board meeting recap, it shows a separate page that will have a list of future, a list of previous recaps down the right-hand side, just like if you click on a news page on this, it'll, it'll show um all sorts of other stories down the right-hand side. That one doesn't for. So it'll reside there, the board meeting recap would be tagged to show up in the news feeds of all the other uh websites on the, in the district, so all the elementarys, the middle school, the high school. And so that means it'll show up not only in the board meeting recap news, but in the regular news, which uh Andrew's had up just previously, and then we can take a photo from the meeting, put that on the front page of all of the websites once it's published, so that it's right there on the homepage rotating through, it could be on all seven websites. And then we would share that recap on our social media platforms, on Facebook, LinkedIn, uh X. We can't share it on Instagram cuz Instagram can't put in links, you can put it in Instagram stories though, so that's sort of a quick overview of how the uh recap would be presented through our platforms, um, different areas to find it, and so the recap then that's here is what I sent you was modeled off um the agenda and addressing every item in the agenda, and each item has three aspects. What the agenda item is, what the history of the agenda item is, and what action you took as a board in regards to the agenda item. It'll link, it'll incorporate photos, um, which were at the board meeting, the pictures I took tonight will be in the next board meeting recap, uh public input, this is who spoke, what their connection is. They have links to policies, videos, uh to direct community members where to go. And then we use different elements of the, of the content manager system for headers, bullets, numbers, uh to call stuff out, so.
So Ian, you plan on doing one again for this board meeting as another sample, we'll send it out to a board again and then on it to get more feedback.
It follows the same uh same template, I've been working on it during the meeting, it's about three quarters done, uh we'll need the video once I get it from Andrew, so happy to take any questions or feedback that you have, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of how it presents and what's in it.
I loved it, and I found it fascinating, but I'm wondering how much time it takes to put on your end and on, and on I can't say, and on Andrew's side to actually get this done and get it up.
So on Andrew's side, it's a matter of getting the video, uh downloading it, um uploading it to YouTube, that'll probably take maybe a half hour.
But that's happening.
We do that anyway.
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, it's part of that anyway. So this first template that I created took me nine hours, but a lot of that was um reading the transcript and watching the video, we didn't use AI on this version. We talked about AI, we took the transcript, put it in ChatGPT, ChatGPT wouldn't. Just said it was too big of a file, we put it, it was a forty-five page transcript.
Oh, yeah.
So we put it in Magic, we finished it, we put it to Magic Schools, and the Magic Schools district, you came back, was very simple. It was just not, it was like a page and a half for the meeting that you had with four agenda items, and it was it just was very simple, um, Andrew's and I have talked about looking at Gemini AI.
Uh, so Google Meet has AI that's integrated into it, that we've been trying to utilize, notebook eleven, and a variety of others.
Yeah, so we're trying.
But I think if we're not doing transcripts anyway and leaving that up to Michelle, we won't even have to worry about it.
Yeah, so a lot of that was the transcribing, the writing, building the pages, building the news page, building a uh separate display page for the news item, uh I can get it done probably in three hours or less. I mean, I've done the one for the next one for this meeting, I worked on it a couple hours prior today, and I've been working on it tonight as you go, I I've just been updating the page that it'll show on, so it it shouldn't take um more than three hours.
Christine, do you know?
Uh, I was first to you, actually.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, it's okay, this is a little bit of a side joke, but Ava and I have been talking about, we've been starting Instagram and posting on that, so we've been talking about maybe doing recaps like this on our Instagram, so just wondering if you guys are okay with that, or if you would like us to email those to you before we post them or something like that.
I I don't think we need to email them to us, I mean, you're here at the meetings and you're members of the board as well, you know, I think if it's, if it's a simple recap and you're just like, the board voted to do this, and you know, we heard from these students and blah blah blah, that should be fine. Thanks.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. We should be, we'll be allowing you guys probably, yeah.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think student representatives, any board members, you know, who wanted to do a recap. First amendment, I mean, it's obviously allowed to, the 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 one sort of logistical thing to think through is if we have it, is we approve the minutes from the prior board meeting and the agenda. If we have something that is equivalent, like, what's the approval process gonna look like? And how is that if we're trying to, you know, give an update in real time, but we're, we don't approve the minutes until
Yeah.
until afterwards, so I do, I do think there's a logistical, and it's different than individuals, because then it's a district speaking as to what took place during our board meeting, that.
So. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just wondering if the students' um rep Instagram will be captured under whatever new social media policy we developed for other individual board social media accounts.
That's actually not really the point, we should probably.
But.
Add it in there.
But that will be, it will probably be equivalent of Nike ties individual board social media account, yeah.
I have a clarifying question, Director Gohit, were you referring to what the student representative's Instagram, or were you referring to what I've just got a quote?
No, excuse me, so I think the students' Instagram would be equivalent to like any director on Facebook or other social media. Um, speaking as a direct, you know, an individual director on the board. When it comes to the district, so you're putting out, there, the concern is that that's sort of quasi, like, minutes.
Yeah.
And so how does it work from an approval process if that's being put out before it's approved by the board?
I can address that uh quickly, um, when we put the first um recap together, I sent it to Fred, Fred and I talked. Uh, superintendent Rama asked me, what do you like about this that you've created, and I said, I like the fact that we have links and we have photos, and we have links to Instagram, and we're doing this recognition. I said, the one thing I'm questioning when I wrote it, wrote it up is I had lots of content of what each of you said about a certain agenda item, like Director Gohit said this, Director, Director Tucker said this, and it was I was hesitant about it, and talking with Fred, I said, this is like minutes, it hasn't been approved, how do we have something that gives information about what's on the agenda and what's discussed, but we're saying we're creating a situation where the context might be not understood by the community, because using the example, um, at the last meeting, the director, um, the naming facilities, Director Laurie had a lot of comments and questions about it. You had less, and you had different um opinions, you thought, let's move forward, let's, it's been ten months, Director Laurie didn't, and if I wrote six sentences about what Director Laurie said and two sentences about what you said, that would create a situation where a community member could be like, well, why does she think this, and why does he think this, and what's going on? And so I totally agree with what you're saying about the minutes and the context and and the logistical hurdle of that. So I took it all out, all, everything that you said about every agenda item, and that's part of the nine hours that took me to put together. Which was just reading transcripts, so I took that out, and now it's, it's replaced with sort of the direction or the recommendations, but in that also is after the board meeting, I'm gonna connect with Michelle, and we're gonna go over what was said in regards to direction, recommendations, and we're gonna make sure that what I have will match what she has in the minutes, so tomorrow, we're gonna chat, I'm gonna say, this is what I've written out, take a look at the page, do you agree, do you disagree? What do we change? We'll have the video, we can go back to the video, we'll have the transcript, and hopefully we'll have some sort of AI solution that we've, and we're continuing to work on, so that's sort of the safeguard against creating a logistical problem or a minutes problem or a conflict, so when we have this next version that I've been working on, I'm gonna send it to you, you'll be able to take a look at it, but you'll know that when seeing it, as I've talked to Michelle and we've gone over sort of the minutes and what she'll be putting in and what the information should be, if that's, if that's helpful.
I wanted to get to our last couple of questions, it's almost ten o'clock, and then I have one last one for you.
It was, uh, uh, I think that that by him doing the exercise that Michelle, uh, he can have a a really check on really how many hours does it take, and if it's worth it or not, or is it, is worth it just kind of to put the, the link to the video that it's, I know that it's in the, the goal boards, but that is accessible for the community, and I think that YouTube pretty much summarizes where people start talking at different points of the agenda. And maybe things that are actionable that we refer, that they might, a link to something that we have talked, maybe, I will say like, for example, that I not followed through, uh, the town hall with the legislators last week, and like saying, okay, this is gonna happen, and this is gonna talk, but just the link, and that's it, nothing more. And uh, but just a really check for you, and you can tell us, because it's a lot of time. And maybe we're not there yet, maybe AI has to go just a tiny little bit before we get there.
I would rather it not include back and forth in what was discussed, I would much rather the report be, I mean, it can say discussion, and then if people wanna see the discussion, they can go actually see the discussion, I think it's really dangerous, and I think the reporting that that's been talking about what people say, unless you're giving a play-by-play, like, an actual accurate play-by-play, I I think it's dangerous, and I would much rather see discussion was held, next steps, or action taken, and it be conclusions. And if people wanna see the discussion, then you can link to it or whatever, but I wouldn't even go there, I, I I actually.
The video will be embedded at the top of the
Right.
top of the report, but YouTube, you don't have that.
Right, and it, yeah, I mean, and then depending on how much work it is to then have a, you know, the timestamp of of when the discussion was, that that's, you know, if you wanna make it easier, depending on how much work it is, that's fine, but I don't wanna be summarized, and I don't want, and if I'm summarized, I want everyone else to be summarized in full. And I don't want any of it, so.
That's why I took out what you guys, it just wasn't, wasn't fair.
Devin and I do agree on some things.
I I actually think this direction is very helpful, like, the, just, you know, make it easier, make it simpler, just like, be, these were the discussion topics, this is what was, you know, here are the documents, if you wanna see them. The video's here, like, these are the things that were voted on, you know, I think, I think that's the simplest. I had thought previously when, when looking at like kind of the AI options and so forth, I had thought I don't know whether minutes have to be approved, like, in a formal vote, or whether like, I don't know if this would be the same as minutes, but I had thought, hmm, I wonder if if you could send us the summary and individually, so it's not like a mass thing where we're discussing and, you know, violating a PMA, and then we could like sign off on them, like, you know, digitally sign them if we approved of them, and then once you, once you hit three, you could publish it, you know? Like, I don't know if that's, if that meets the legal requirements in terms of like, if they're, they're not actually minutes, it's like more like a little in-house news publication, so anyway. But I think this direction keeps it simpler and less work for everybody, so, yeah.
Ava had one.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, keeping it like, just simple info and just having it be like conversation starters for like the community, just be like, oh, that's intriguing, I wanna look more, so, yeah.
Agreed.
Excellent. Um, okay, that's it for lunch report.
I think Fred summarized.
Yes.
We got very, very silly, and, and where, where we're. Okay, um, um, I would just add that, uh, Christine and I did a town hall, it was recognized.
About there was two.
Um, very, you know, connected by Ava and Lucy, and it was at Lunch's last week.
Oh.
Um, yeah, I'm like, when was that? It was last week, we did a Lunch's, uh, Lunch Town Hall with students, um, on a, on Friday, I think. And it was fantastic, they, I think, just, I just wanna recognize, like, that Ava and Lucy are going so above and beyond, um, any previous sort of holder of this role of like really involving students and advocating and getting students to advocate and really think thoughtfully about their role in um a community and in a sort of like a civic, a civic people. And I, I just really appreciate it, I know it's a lot of hard work to include it, it was very fun for, um, Christine and I to come in and talk about the legislative process.
There were, I don't know how many people signed up, but there were.
It was, yeah, the library was chock full of Lunch's.
Kids extrude away.
Well, yeah, sure.
They couldn't fit in the, in.
Yeah, so, yes, and they did a great job facilitating it, and um, those are great experiences.
Yes, and next week, um, Dr. Rundle and Randy are also gonna be going to the school to give bond info, so, yeah.
Anybody else have any important query or report, cuz I have one.
I went to the advocacy meeting, but I think it was also, we talked together about how it was going to work at the town hall and, and what everybody was going to ask, so, so, yes. That was it.
Yeah. Okay, Judy, I guess, I wonder if Jess comes here last night. Excellent, okay, um, I just have this question. Just while it's fresh in our mind, all the students and adults that we heard from tonight about the Native American boarding schools thing. Are people interested in learning more about that, in hearing about what is taught in our district, cuz I will say, having had two kids go all the way through this district, they did not learn a lot of Native American history. Like, and I remember visiting the middle school, not the last time I visited the middle school, but two times ago, and sitting in a classroom and flipping through the textbook that was used, I mean, kind of like, this is it, like, this is all that fit, we get to learn about this, you know? So, like, I, like, we do have, you know, as part of our annual kind of traditions in this district, we have, you know, Judy Pusacabe come in and talk about, uh, I might be off by a syllable. Come in and talk about, you know, the Japanese-American internment, this is something that went on for much longer, with much more devastating effects, not that the intern camps were devastating for some families, um, many families, but, so I'm just like I'm, I am interested in more, but I know that, like, I don't know enough yet about what, what our kids do. I'm, I am interested in more, but I know that, like, I don't know enough yet about what, what our kids do learn in school, and I'm very wary of being like, we must add X, Y, Z to the curriculum, right? So I'm just kind of like measuring interest first down the line, kind of thinking about this more, yeah.
I think that I can send my questions to Fred for his report, but I know that, uh, there's the ethnic studies that the state requires, and also uh, there was partnership that was, that started, but I don't know where it landed with the, as we try to actually incorporate some of the learning into the curriculum, so I don't know where that stands, but those, I could, we could totally send all our questions for Fred before we adopt anything or look into, so to see where we are, and then we can take a decision. But I have to acknowledge that that history happened, and I'm hearing the people and acknowledge that, uh, it has been tough in Washington State, so.
So if anyone has thoughts or questions about that, send them to Christina.
I, I. It did definitely pique my curiosity, I would love to learn more, it needs to be after June.
Yeah, yeah, I. Okay, I think that's something, um, do I have any questions, Julia?
So move.
All of you heard, if you say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for sitting so long, so happy for you.
Thank you.